I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting at 5:00 PM, June 14th, 2023. This is our regular school committee meeting. We are opening tonight's meeting in the Christine McGrath Auditorium.
At Tewksbury Memorial High School to recognize some of the cherished staff members who will be retiring after a collective number of years at the Tewksbury Schools. We'll also be welcoming tonight the TMHS Esports Team, the Wynn Middle School Drama Club, and TMHS Theater Company. Thank you all for coming. This is a very special night for us. Before I ask our superintendent to speak and introduce our guests, I have just a few words to share on behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee. We'd like to say thank you to the retirees for being with us here. We have sincere appreciation for all that you've done to educate, feed, mentor, guide, support, and you believe in the students that you've worked with over the years. You've kept them safe, you've nurtured them beyond expectations, and the district is stronger because of you. Not only have you helped to create a caring, loving, and respectful work environment for your colleagues, you've been intricate in defining the school culture that exists for students and for staff today. Thank you. And our thespians in the room, we have a lot of them. Outstanding performances and outstanding accomplishments in all that you have achieved this year. You've represented your peers, your schools, and you've represented Tewksbury so well. Thank you to the directors and the leaders in both organizations. Your strength in your leadership and the strong presence of family and friends that help you with fundraising and coordinating outside of the shows speaks volumes. Thank you for joining us tonight. And to our returning champions in esports, congratulations. We appreciate you joining us again. Although this may be a newer sport for Tewksbury, you've all brought attention to the program in a positive way. You too have represented your school community in an outstanding way, and tonight we honor your accomplishments. So, Mrs. Terrio Regan, if you'd like to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. No applause necessary, though. But that was lovely, Bridgette. Retirees, welcome and welcome to all of your family, your friends, and your many fans who have come out to honor you tonight and celebrate you. Before I invite your principals and directors up here to say a little bit about you and why you've been so integral in the running of the entire schools in our school system, I just want to make mention, on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Lori McDermott and myself, we've prepared a special little message on the back of the program for you. But more than anything, I too want to thank you for educating our kiddos, for feeding us, for keeping our schools clean and safe every day, and certainly for keeping us organized and putting the best face on the, you know, front line of our schools. So, thank you to all of you who have done that on behalf of our students and all of our staff. And then finally, I would wish you farewell, and may your future endeavors be filled with happiness and success. And from the bottom of our hearts, thank you so much. So, I'm going to start with, if you look in the program, our principal of the high school, Mr. Andrew Long, if you could come on up, along with Ms. Deb Mugford. And they will begin our program to say all the kind words and wonderful contributions Mr. Laney Bennett has made to our food service program. Thank you.
Laney.
Watch out, she might cry.
Laney Bennett was hired actually last century here in September of 1999, and has dedicated 24 years to literally serving the students and families of TMHS. The ultimate compliment I can give Laney is not having to deal with any issues in the cafeteria. She does her job well, she hires amazing workers to get the job done, and leads by example. She's the ultimate professional and will be missed.
Hi, everybody. This is really bittersweet for me. I've worked alongside Laney for 22 years. So, for those 23 years, let me just say that when you do the math, and really to put it into perspective, there's approximately 20,000 kids that went through the halls of Tewksbury Memorial High School with over 1.5 million lunches sold. So, and I have to say, and that's at the high school. And let me tell you, there's been a lot of, we've seen it all through the news over the years. There's been so many things happening. Laney was instrumental in implementing the breakfast program at the high school, first time. We were one of the first areas to implement the breakfast program. Laney was reluctant to start with the computers and the POS, and she was used to the paper rosters and the keystroke registers. We had a little pushin' to do with that, but we all know how much you love computers, right Laney? And then we had the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. For those of you who don't know, the whole nutrition industry went changed. I mean, there were so many changes. And despite the challenges and the obstacles that we had, Laney was instrumental, teaching, coaching, providing positive outlook to her staff, to her colleagues, to everybody. And then, of course, we have the catering. So, catering was during the school day and after the school day, no matter what. We had Scholarship Night, National Honor Society, many, many catering events for our superintendent here. We had a lot of last-minute catering events from our friend Ron, and I told him, I said, "Throw him under the bus on that." But it was always with a smile, always with a smile. There's so many things that are behind the scenes, but Laney had a passion for everything that she did, and I can attest to that. But on behalf of all of us, I can tell you what a pleasure it is to work with Laney and how honored we are to be celebrating her retirement. She's definitely earned it. We know that she's going to be spending a lot of time in her happy place with a sidekick over there at Plum Island, and we're happy. Just remember to invite us all. But can I just end this with a letter that we got from a graduating senior this year? Couldn't have been more perfect, because not only did 1.5 million lunches go through the school, but I can guarantee you a lot more smiles. So, this is what we have from one of our graduating students. Dear Lunch Ladies, this past year has been very difficult, but I am so grateful to have a great lunch every day. At 11 o'clock, I would come down to the lunchroom to see you with all your smiling faces. Thank you for putting all of your time and effort into lunches and breakfast each day. I will miss having your yummy lunches every day. I'm just glad I'm going to UMass Amherst for more great lunches, not as great as yours, though. Have an amazing summer, ladies. Thank you very much. So, does that not say it in a nutshell? So, Laney, thank you. I'm going to give her a hug.
Thank you. And now I'll invite Principal John Ware and Assistant Principal Victoria Cordero to come on up and speak about their special retiree.
Joanne Kearns, where is she? She was back there. There you are. Good, moved up front. It's amazing to think of your commitment to Tewksbury and the Tewksbury Schools. You started working for the town in 1978, and since then, thousands of students, staff, and families have passed through the doors of the Wynn Middle School, and you have in one way or another touched the lives of all those people. You supported the building in a way that kept our staff and students safe and enabled them to thrive. Your dedication kept the school a tight and steady ship for so many years. When I started at the Wynn, then-Principal Jack Donahue made it very clear to me that, yes, he was the principal, but it was really Joanne who ran the ship. He would say the same to visitors. The Wynn was and will always be your second home, and as people, your second family. You always express such pride in both your own family, who's here tonight, and the family at the Wynn. We are so thankful for your service, and I'm personally thankful for all the support you provided to me. You'll always be a true friend, and we all wish you the very best in your retirement. And now, I'd like to turn it over to one of our newest staff members who can further personally attest to these qualities, Assistant Principal Ms. Cordero.
Hi, Joanne. So, of over 40 years of service, I've worked with Joanne for all of four months of it. So, you may ask, why on earth would I be speaking about her time in Tewksbury Public Schools? I don't even account for 1% of her time in the district. However, I'm going to tell you why. Because in the very short time that she was our secretary, my secretary, I quickly recognized how special she was and how lucky and maybe a little spoiled all of you were to have her. The day of my interview last May, I entered the Wynn the first time, never having been in the town or even meeting anyone from Tewksbury. Joanne was the very first face I saw when I entered the building. In never meeting me, she warmly smiled and said, "Good luck, and you are going to do great." She was my first impression of this town, my first impression of the school, and it was a great one, a welcoming one. While she made me feel special, I know she was also the same for countless students, families, faculty, and community members for over 40 years. She makes people feel part of the town, part of the Wynn. On my very first day on the job, she welcomed me again with a warm smile and said, "See, I knew you would be great." The next four months, she gave me support, encouragement, and all the motherly hugs that I needed. She is what kept the office, school, and me running. Even seven months later, following retirement, she can't stay away. She messages often to check on me and my children, both the ones in my home and the ones at the school. Just this week, she was bringing us Donna's Donuts and spending time checking in on our cafeteria staff and our other faculty members. Joanne has lived a life focused on building long-lasting relationships and treating all as part of the community. She is a major reason why I'm here proudly working in this town today. Joanne, you represent all the best of Tewksbury, and this town is lucky to call you theirs. Enjoy your retirement and your long overdue and well-deserved vacation in Ireland. We love you.
Okay, our next two retirees are not with us, but I would invite Mr. John Marshan, our maintenance foreman, and Principal Judy McGinnis, because I'm hoping they're watching from home, to just say a quick thank you and recognize the two retirees from the Ryan School, please.
I just want to recognize Ron Page for his 22 years of custodial service at the Ryan School. He's a great worker. He put all his heart into everything he did. And I actually worked side by side with him as a custodian when I was a custodian myself. So, I hope he learned a little something from you the short time I worked with him. But I just want to congratulate him on his 22 years of service.
I will keep my remarks very brief. Also, Ron taught me how to be a custodian, and he's the first person that told me, "Never let a good pencil get by you." And he's quite right. I have quite a large collection. You can never be without a pencil. And that is thanks to Ron Page, and if you've ever met him, always a smile on his face and always happy to do a great job for us. So, again, congratulations to him and his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy and John. Next, I'd like to invite Connor Burgoyne, our TTA president, as well as Jay Harding, to talk about some of our Center Elementary School retirees, one who's with us tonight.
All right. Hello. This is right, Mike, right? You can hear me? Okay, good, awesome. Congratulations to our TTA members who are retiring, Karen, Donna, Mary Beth, and Lisa. While you couldn't be here tonight, I want to thank you for being the amazing educators you are, and thank you for being the involved union members you are, striving to improve our working conditions and foster our student learning conditions. We will miss you. I'm sure you are very excited and maybe even a bit baffled that your retirement's already here. And I get that, because I'm not too far behind you, 28 more years. To wrap up, I once read these wise words at my friend's parents' home. They were retired teachers, and they had a piece of wall decor that read, "Goodbye, tension, and hello pension." All right, thank you.
I like those words, Connor. Thank you. First, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Bound and Ms. Bancroft, that are not here with us tonight. I haven't known them that long, just coming over to Center, but wish them well in their retirement. They've made a huge impact in our building in just a very short period of time, and wish them nothing but the best. Peter. Hi, Peter. Peter, over 30 years of service, one of the first people I met when I came to Tewksbury, greeted me with open arms in a building torn apart, getting ready for summer construction. Many people have said that you were an originator of the train hand. You've been around so long, but you knew that building better than anyone else, whether it was that boiler that would act up, whether it was the electrical system, whatever in the building. You were always there for us, making the building safe through COVID. Can't thank you enough for all you've done, the students, the staff. We miss you. We still miss you. Wish you well. But wish you nothing but the best in retirement, so congratulations.
I just want to add to Peter, 34 years in... 36, okay. 36 years of going to a job or arriving at a job is not a job. It's a way of life, I guess you can say. So, I just want to say good luck and congratulations on your new way of life, your retirement. And that goes for all the retirees. I mean, it's a lot of years sitting there. So, good luck, everybody. Good luck, Peter.
We may have messed up the bags a little, so Ms. Johnson will help us get a little organized. If I could have our principal, Ms. Alexis Bosworth, come up from the Dewing Elementary School to honor her retirees.
I would like to invite one other person to come up and stand next to me, Mrs. Garrish, former principal of the Dewing Elementary School, a big part of our retirees' life, six years? Yes, seven years. I forgot how to count. First, I'd like to talk about Mrs. Mary Beth Tierney, who cannot be with us tonight. Hopefully, you're watching. If not, I'm sorry if I look silly just looking at the camera. Mrs. Tierney, I have known you now for 12 years. You are an exceptional educator. The work that you have done for our students, you have taught so many struggling readers to read, to enjoy reading, to love books, and most importantly, to love school. You care deeply for our students. You also spent, my first four years as an assistant principal, you really helped me. You helped me keep on track, make sure, gave me a lot of suggestions, which I took to heart because I knew how much you cared about the school. So, Mrs. Tierney, I wish you all the best in your retirement, and thank you for everything you've done here for us at the Dewing and in Tewksbury. And Mrs. Wallace, AKA Principal Joy. You are not only the heart of the Dewing School, but the soul of the Dewing School. Every person who enters this door, or the Dewing School door, sees you and knows how much you care about this school. I didn't write anything, because normally I'm a really good writer. I couldn't. I couldn't put into words how much we appreciate the work that you've done for every single student who has walked through the door and for every single teacher and staff. You entertain us. You keep us grounded. You help us have fun. It's really important. We are a community, and we are a community because of you, Joy. And I'm not ready to say goodbye, so I expect fully that you will be there in September, not September. We already talked about September. The weather's too nice up in Newburyport and Plum Island for you to be here in September. But we will see you in October. Please come and visit, and just bring your beautiful smile. School doesn't start in October, but please come and visit, because you'll always be a part of our lives.
Hi, Mrs. Tierney. What she said. No, you really, one of the things, for a while it took me, as I was coming, when I came to the Dewing eight years ago, I was surprised. I thought you were a teacher. And you kind of are. It's one of the things that you were able to do, all the things that Alexis talked about, with your love of learning and your ability to work as a teammate with Liz Robinson and then with Colleen Allison, at least in the years that I knew. And the ability to go to children who they were happy. Kids struggled reading when they came to see you, but because they skipped kind of coming back, because you made it fun for them and you made them stronger and better able to be successful in their day. You helped, you were helping with folks from the TTA as a rep, and you provided some really nice, grounding, common sense advice as we were going through, and I was learning how to do school here in Tewksbury, and I appreciated that very much. I also appreciated your ability to be a straight shooter and to always tell the truth as you saw it, and that made us all better. Joy Wallace. Joy Wallace, I was the seventh principal in 10 years at the Dewing School when I arrived. When Alexis says, "Principal Joy," she means it. You are the grounding force of that school. You know, you know that. It's like, okay, what are you going to make me change? Can I just tell you? And you did. Smile on your face. You knew how to do everything, but you are one... And I told you, in my whole career, I've had two people that have been outstanding, and you're right there. And the ability to read a school, the ability to understand what students need, what families need, when it's important to get the principal, when you can let the principal be alone. But what to do with the teachers, what you could do, what you needed help with, what to say, "Don't worry about this," or "We need to get worried doing about this." You've trained, you trained every office member in there from the time that I was there. You trained me. You trained Alexis, you know, you talked about that too. You brought, you shared parts of your family. We got to see pictures of your boys in tuxes at different weddings, and you've had the most recent wedding. We hear about your golf, your husband's golfing, and the fact that every once in a while, he might let you go on the same trip, but not really. You are a fabulous mother and daughter. The care that you bring to your parents, family always comes first with you, and I appreciate, I always appreciated that. It was a joy, a privilege, and an honor to work for you and to be a team with you. Thank you.
Very nice, very nice. All right, and John Marshan, if you could come back up. We have one more retiree just to obviously honor and recognize, and that's Danny Martin. I'm sure Danny's watching live right now to hear all the wonderful things you have to say about him. We miss him.
All right, so Danny Martin, there's many, many stories of Danny Martin, but we'll leave those behind. Danny was just a genuine great worker, from custodial to when we brought him on on maintenance, and there wasn't a single thing that I'd ask him to do, he would not do. And Deb can attest to that. She worked closely with Danny as well, so... Kind of, there's one word to describe Danny. He's just wonderful. We miss him from day one, and he's living the grand life down in South Carolina, driving his golf cart around every day. And he doesn't do much golfing, but he has a golf cart. I get, you know, a high from now and then, but for the most part, he's just retired and having fun. I think he spends time back and forth to Florida with his friends and everything. So, but congratulations, Danny, if you're watching live. And send me a text or something, will you? Brighten up my day sometimes, some of the things he sends me, so... But congratulations, Danny.
Thank you, everybody. So, many people really do make their mark on our public school system, and we thank them for that. So, now, we are going to recognize and congratulate our high school esports team. I'd like to invite their advisor, is Athletic Director Coach Ron Druin in the room? I'm not sure. Sanford, why don't you come on up? Sanford Abregas is the team advisor, I would say also coach. And your students, your esports champions, can have a position right up here on the risers while your coach talks a little bit about your award. Come on up, Sanford.
I didn't know I was speaking. Surprise! So, we've been doing esports now for about four years, and two years ago, three years ago, when you were a freshman, you came to ask me if we could do Rocket League, and I said, "Make me a team." And last year, we came in second place twice, and this year, we've come in first place in the state twice. So, I think that's pretty decent for a team that we just kind of put together with a few kids and said, "Let's try this out." Unfortunately, Andy Harlocka couldn't be here, and we were waiting for Tofi Bayon, but I don't know where he is. So, Peter is very proud to be holding our trophy from this season. So, this year, we went, this season, we went and defeated 24-0 in matches, 8-0 for matches and 24-0 in games. Nobody beat us during the entire season until we got to the finals. We went 4-0 in the semifinals against, was it Burlington? Was it semifinals? And 4-0 against Nipmuck in the quarterfinals. And then, our finals were against Shrewsbury, who is pretty much the juggernaut of esports, having won most state titles over the last six years. We beat them 4-3 in a back-and-forth match, which was pretty crazy and very stressful, and I wasn't up there. Peter was saying, "This was way too stressful. I want to just have fun next year" because that was too much stress to deal with. So, I hope we can be up here again next season with another championship, so thank you all.
Peter, stay up there, Coach Abregas. Why don't you stand next to him? We have a "whereas" in recognition of your achievement.
All right, and second time being able to read this.
I know.
Glad to hear it. Are we a powerhouse now? Right on. All right, so, "Present to you this resolution of recognition, whereas the TMHS Esports Team continue to demonstrate hard work, sportsmanship, perseverance, and character throughout the 2023 competition season. Team members Peter Impink, Andy Harlocka, Jonas Jimenez, Tofi Bayloon, and Chris Abregas, team advisor Sanford Abregas. And whereas TMHS Esports Spring Rocket Team League had an undefeated regular season, giving up no points, they won both their semi and quarterfinal matches, 4-0, defeating Nipmuck in the first round in Burlington High School in the second. They went on to defeat Shrewsbury for the state championship, 4-3 in a back-and-forth match." I'm starting to sound repetitive. I'm sorry. Sounds nice, say it twice. And whereas TMHS Esports Team is the MSAA Esports Rocket League Spring 2023 State Championship Champions. And whereas Peter, Andy, Jonas, Tofi, and Chris have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to their parents and families, to Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Congratulations on behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to call up the Wynn Middle School Drama Club. They are being recognized for their fiery performance in Fire Exit. I want to welcome up their club director, Mr. John DePrima, and Principal John Ware. They are going to... Students, they're going to call you up one at a time, and folks, please hold your applause. We're going to get the rise... We're going to get the risers full of our Wynn Middle School Drama students, and then Mr. De Prima and Mr. Ware will say a little bit about you, but then stay put because we have a resolution of recognition to read to you as well. Thank you.
I guess before I say names, I do want to say that I think no other activity in public schools or anywhere in a community was hit as hard as performing arts when COVID hit the world. To that point, I look out and I'm so excited to see high school students that came through our program. There are seniors that graduated this year that brought Tewksbury its first gold medal in theater. And without skipping a festival... Without skipping a festival, eighth graders that are in the audience now brought Tewksbury its second and third gold medals. That's how much time has passed. And now I'd like to read the names of roughly 40 of the most important people in the world to me right now. The casting crew of Wynn Middle School's gold medal-winning production of Fire Exit are cast, I'm going to read it in alphabetical order, but I guess in the most easy way for you to get to those risers, and then we'll make you look good for the photo. Blake Adams, Ellie Allard, Adrian Baez, Mia Bettencourt, Nathan Bettencourt, Sophia Campbell, Dory Casey, Gianna DeChico, Brian Flynn, Kayla Gittens, Lorenzi Head, Wyatt Holmes, Joey Kane, Martha Kapitakis, Caroline Kaplan, Lily Kelly, Katrina LaPage, Laura Madsen, Gray McDonald, Aria Milner, Haley Rose Ricker, Isabella Robson, Luke Singvannich, Leila Sabay, Leo Spazucco, Daphne Tambi, Henry Valencourt, Abigail Vino, Christopher Wallace, Celeste Webb, Arden Yendow. I also want to list the names of the people who were mentioned as All-Star Company Award winners. The judges need to agree across the board that these performers or technicians were noteworthy in their adjudications of our performances. And for our All-Star Company this year, we have Blake Adams, Kevin Dagel, Jake Gigante, Grace Kennedy, and Cordelia Zwerk. I also need to mention our team captains. I joked that on my contract, I'm technically the head coach of the drama club, but our team captains do run the show. I sit down during any of our performances with the audience, and these individuals, our stage managers, call the cues, wrangle the actors, they make the show happen. This year's stage managers are team captains. Our assistant stage manager is Vijay Godin, and our stage manager is Jeff Wolfinger. Before anything official, did I accidentally miss anybody? Lovely.
Mr. De Prima, you should stand right up there with your cast and crew to hear this resolution.
I am proud to present this resolution of recognition to the amazing Wynn Middle School Drama Club cast and crew who participated in the production of Fire Exit, led by Jonathan De Prima. Whereas the cast and crew of Fire Exit brought home the Emmett Educational Theater Guild's 2023 Middle School Drama Festival's Gold Medal Award, Blake Adams, Kevin Dagel, Jake Gigante, Grace Kennedy, and Cordelia Zwerk... Thank you. Each received the All-Star Company Award for Performance, and whereas the Wynn Drama Club and crew, under the direction of John De Prima, demonstrated dedication, pride, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to their parents and families, to the Wynn Middle School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the commitment of the Wynn Middle School Drama Club on behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee.
Okay, Jason, do you have a good picture of them? Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations. Okay, last but certainly not least is the cast and crew of the Tewksbury Memorial High School Theater Company, winning six Tammy Awards for their performance, yes, be proud, for your performance of Beauty and the Beast. I'm going to welcome up your theater club directors, Ms. Celeste Pellegrino and Mr. David Moffett, and your principal, Mr. Andy Long, and students, similar to the Wynn, they will talk a little bit about you, call up all of you onto those risers. We may need to put a few of you up here on the stage, and then we'll read your resolution of recognition as well. Come on up.
It has been a truly thrilling year for the arts in Tewksbury. Our students put on three fantastic shows, starting back with "Radium Girls" in the fall, a grand night for singing in the winter, and ending with Beauty and the Beast in the spring. Beauty and the Beast sold out in this huge auditorium, three of our four performances. And that is not only a testament to our amazing and their truly amazing cast and crew, but also the town of Tewksbury for supporting their students and supporting the arts. My mom actually came to Beauty and the Beast, and she said, "The roars of applause were so loud, you would have thought Elvis was onstage." So it was just spectacular. And even if we had not won a single Tammy Award, this show would have still left just wonderful memories. But we did win six awards, so this show won Best Costumes, Hair, and Makeup. We won Best Visual Excellence. We won the Bronze Award in a Supporting Actor role, Greg Mercado as Lumiere. We won the Silver Award, the Silver Medal, and Best Leading Performance in a Role by Sarah Downing as Belle. We won Best Lighting and Best Overall Production. It's pretty spectacular. We have some members of our cast and crew here today, but I'm going to read everyone who participated in this show. Lindsay Holbrook, Lucia Alverdo, Ella Lightfield, Sienna Shrimp, Kelsey Ripley, Gray Zadig, Abby Cadman, Emily Carrier, Danny Franklin, Helen Flaherty, David Penny, Jared Woodman, Ava Cognata, Audrey Dagel, Maddie Caliendo, Sean Patrick Butler, Nathan Seer, Becca Godin, Samantha Holbrook, Maddox Horgan, Hazel Garabedian, Finn Knife, Sophia Kretzinger, Janita Long, Chase Mealy, Sabrine Sabir, Si Stoddard, Catherine Sonoa, and Matty Whittle made up Our cast was comprised of Sarah Downing, Darren Castiglioni, Brooke Bunyan, Ryan King, Greg Mercado, Adam Shockett, Emma Pellon, Jillian Waugh, Marisa Gomes, Julia Beruschek, Sean Carr, Colin Todd, Zach Sullivan, Alex Nagibbi, Kayla Amara, Jared Cohen, Elena Pejic, Carla Silva, Maeve Knife, Catherine Melendez, Will King, Sheila Parma, Haley Shanahan, Savannah Helm, Natalie Matucio, and Ariel Portillo. We also had two TMHS students join our professional pit. That was Nate Bone and Sam Calvero. Thank you.
It's absolutely incredible to see the drama program in Tewksbury, both our Wynn and High School flourishing and thriving, especially as Mr. De Prima pointed out, coming out of a pandemic and all, so it's absolutely incredible. You guys should all be proud. So I have just a resolution of recognition that I'd like to read. Whereas the Tewksbury Memorial High School Theater Company cast and crew participated in the production of Beauty and the Beast. Whereas Beauty and the Beast was nominated for 18 Tammy Awards, winning six of these nominations for Best Overall Production, Visual Excellence, Best Costumed Hair, Makeup, Best Lighting, Bronze, and Best Supporting Actor, Greg Mercado, and Silver, and Best Lead Actor, Sarah Downing. And whereas Beauty and the Beast sold out three of the four shows, making the first time in TMHS Theater Company history that this has happened. And whereas the Tewksbury Memorial High School Theater Company, under the direction of Celeste Pellegrino and David Moffett, demonstrated great commitment, dedication, pride, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to their families, to the Tewksbury Public Schools, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the commitment of the Tewksbury Memorial High School Theater Company. Congratulations on behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee.
And this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Again, thank you so much to our retirees for joining us tonight. You will be sorely missed. It was nice hearing the words that were shared by people who know you so well. And thank you for, all of our students for being here tonight. I know it's a tough night. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion from one of my colleagues to convene an executive session, which is a non-public session, to discuss the approval of May 10, 2023 Executive Session Minutes and collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA teachers and strategize pertaining to non-union personnel as superintendent. The school committee will reconvene an open session after executive session at 6:30. A motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. Roll call vote, how do you vote, Mr. Parsons? Katie, I. Kayla, I. Or Ty. So at this time, we convene. Thank you so much for joining us. Katie, I. Kayla, I. Rachel, I. So at this time, we convene. Thank you so much for joining us.
Welcome. Thank you all for coming. We reconvene our regular school committee meeting tonight at 6:30 PM. Just for point of reference, we did meet earlier at 5:00 PM to open our meeting in open session where we had recognitions of the 2023 TPS retirees, the Tucksbury High School esports team, the Wynn Middle School Drama Club, and the TMHS Theater Company. So that will be recorded by Tucksbury Telemedia and available probably, I would imagine tomorrow for viewing. But this is our first portion of the live meeting for tonight. So if we could all start with the Pledge of Allegiance and please rise.
Welcome. Thank you all for coming. We reconvene our regular school committee meeting tonight at 6:30 PM. Just for point of reference, we did meet earlier at 5:00 PM to open our meeting in open session where we had recognitions of the 2023 TPS retirees, the Tucksbury High School esports team, the Wynn Middle School Drama Club, and the TMHS Theater Company. So that will be recorded by Tucksbury Telemedia and available probably, I would imagine tomorrow for viewing. But this is our first portion of the live meeting for tonight. So if we could all start with the Pledge of Allegiance and please rise.
Welcome. Thank you all for coming. We reconvene our regular school committee meeting tonight at 6:30 PM. Just for point of reference, we did meet earlier at 5:00 PM to open our meeting in open session where we had recognitions of the 2023 TPS retirees, the Tucksbury High School esports team, the Wynn Middle School Drama Club, and the TMHS Theater Company. So that will be recorded by Tucksbury Telemedia and available probably, I would imagine tomorrow for viewing. But this is our first portion of the live meeting for tonight. So if we could all start with the Pledge of Allegiance and please rise.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just a brief announcement. The June 14, 2023 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. It may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22, Verizon Channel 34, or on youtube.com/tucksburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting at this time. I would ask if anybody's recording tonight's meeting, please identify themselves. Okay, seeing no one. This is spectacular to have so many people here, especially our students with us from the Ryan School. So before we get to you though, I would just invite Rania, our student council rep from the high school, to just give us your update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight I have my final student report of the year. So let me start with some club updates from the months of May and June. Many clubs have had their last meetings of the year already, and they're always excited to start up again next year. There will be a club fair at the end of this summer, which student council members will be volunteering at to guide students. And this will entail several clubs promoting themselves and offering opportunities for the upcoming freshmen to join. Along with this, in the summer, there will be an engineering summer clinic at UMass Lowell offered to the first 30 students who decide to sign up. Additionally, on May 30, the TMHS Fine and Performing Arts Department went on a field trip to Franklin Park Zoo along with Fennel Hall. Some sports updates I have include that many sports seasons have already ended. And all the sports did amazing this whole season at MVCs, and some people even ended up qualifying for states in their sports along with all states. However, the girls softball team is still playing, and they made it to the state semifinals after an astounding 13-0 win against Bedford. The fall sports meeting was on Monday, June 12, where students could explore the possibilities for the fall sports. And just some extra information I have is that the senior prom along with the promenade was held right prior to it. This was on Tuesday, June 6. And senior week was held last week with graduation being last Friday as well. On June 6 and 7, the freshman students took the final MCAS of the year, which was the Biology MCAS. And all AP classes have had their meetings for the upcoming school year and contracts are due by the end of this week, some being due prior already. Classes for next year have also been pretty much solidified as meetings with guidance counselors were abundant and vital in fixing the many scheduling problems which the majority of students, including myself, had. And gold cards, which are papers necessary in order to exempt a final, they were given out these past few weeks. And we finally reached the last week of school, meaning that the final exams are going to be held until tomorrow, which is Thursday. Well, Friday will be a makeup day. So that's really all I have to say tonight, and I hope everyone has a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. Any comments from anybody? Thank you very much. And we now move on to our zoo project. Students from the Ryan Elementary School. Mrs. Sarah Regan, if you'd like to introduce.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, with us are members, student representatives of grades 5 and 6 from the Ryan School along with their amazing STEM teachers, Ms. Eileen Lindsay and Ms. Kim Hilson. This is the Extreme Zoo Makeover Project. The students are here with you tonight and their parents. Thank you for being here with them to showcase a year-long STEM project-based learning project. I'd like to just remind everyone that STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, and it's an integrated approach to solving problems in the world and to make the world a better place for all living creatures, people and animals alike. So the team is going to take you down the year-long journey they had in doing just that. So Ms. Lindsay and Ms. Hilson, if you could lead the presentation.
Thank you, everyone. I'm just going to start off. We have, can you just raise your hand? This is Mrs. Lindsay and Mrs. Hilson. They're blending in with the students right now because our students have grown quite a bit since they arrived at the Ryan. The students are going to do all of the talking except I'm going to have to pass this along. So for our students, please just remember to tell everybody your name because they don't all know who you are. So let's start off with our introduction.
Hi, I'm Samantha Conroy. And the challenge this year for Massachusetts STEM Week was for student engineers to redesign habitats for animal in captivity. Each team of engineers needed to design a habitat that met specific needs of the animal of their choosing. And they also needed to engineer an enrichment item for the animal species that would bring out natural behaviors.
Hi, I'm Rose McGuinness. Our school embarked on a school-wide field trip to the Franklin Park Zoo to observe different animal exhibits. While there, we took notes from different design perspectives. Stakeholders included the animals, the zookeeper, and the zoo guest. We noted what we liked about the habitats and we saw what we didn't like.
Just can I just remind you, nice and loud, that link is not really picking us up. So give it, give it a cheerleading voice for your cheering voice.
Hi, I'm Sarah Spazucco. We, we as engineers researched using graphs, pictures, and articles, and created a table listing the pros and cons of animals in the wild and animals in captivity.
Hi, I'm Kira Tamburello. We completed a research guide for our animal to identify the needs of the animal and to help the development of the habitat.
Hi, I'm Carter Fleming. We developed an enrichment item which met the needs of at least two of the five categories: social, cognitive, physical, sensory, and nutritional.
Hi, I'm Mary Jane Price. And we also created animals out of paper mache in art classes or art class to place in or next to the exhibit.
Hi, my name is Desta. And during this project, we used co-spaces to design a virtual habitat before making the physical model. We used the block coding to create our habitat in virtual or augmented reality.
Hi, I'm Erin McCusker. All of this work culminated with the Ryan School Extreme Zoo Makeover on June 5. We're, oh, God. We were, we were able to showcase our work. My classmates and I came to share our design, to share their designs and thoughts on the, on the design challenge.
We have a few pictures, as you can see, and I think we would be happy to take any questions, but that's the end of their explanation for now until you ask them some good questions. Yes, let's do it.
So we're going to each pick one to one committee member and show them your virtual designs.
So you're each getting a little field trip in and of itself. They'll all be over to show you something.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions from the committee?
You can spread out. Here, why don't you?
It's my favorite animal about all the animals.
The leaves.
Very cool.
Oh, okay.
So much to eat here.
Do you have to do like a lot of things to move the one that you wanted?
Needs to be big or no?
That's okay.
In a lot of trees, in a lot of spaces for the sloth.
Makes them cooler.
There's a lot of space for the sloth.
Isn't it cool?
It's a lot of fun.
We have some that did them on the merch.
Do you think they could jump out?
Put it in your hands so you have a cube.
They jump.
It's really neat, so.
Maybe, yes.
Want to show me the other one?
Yeah. Did you have a lot of fun doing this project?
Yeah.
It seemed really cool.
Thank you, guys.
You're in fifth grade?
Yeah.
All in fifth grade? Yeah, yeah, awesome. I hope you have a great summer. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, girls.
My daughter's in sixth grade.
I'm doing video games right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You should go back in front of Anderson because you may get a couple of questions.
She's a six C. Are you a six C?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, there it is.
The zoo designers, whenever you're done, you can come right back over where you were standing on the other side?
Oh, yeah, very cool.
What a cool project.
Very cool. Is that like the leader? Looks like the leader. 3D dimension inside.
Was it enough to just plan for food and shelter? Did you just plan for food and shelter for the animal?
Wow, so not only is it you put anything else in there to make sure it thrive?
It's pretty cool, pretty neat.
Put some things nice.
Did you guys like STEM a lot this year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's your favorite subject. Yeah, it's your favorite subject.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys going into seventh grade.
Very cool.
Sixth, actually.
One more year.
One more year of STEM at the Ryan, right?
Very cool.
Excellent. Awesome job.
Thank you. Very cool.
Thank you, guys.
Did you see this meerkat at the zoo?
We all looked at just one. It wasn't that one.
Yeah. Snakes getting into this. I didn't realize. Why'd you pick a meerkat? Oh, okay. Very cool. Nice job, buddy. You're the last one up here, too. Nice job, bud.
Any questions from anybody from the committee to the students or their teachers?
No questions, but just comment. You know, and
Identify themselves. Okay, seeing no one. This is spectacular to have so many people here, especially our students with us from the Ryan School. So before we get to you, though, I would just invite Rania, our student council rep from the high school, to just give us your update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight I have my final student report of the year. So let me start with some club updates from the months of May and June. Many clubs have had their last meetings of the year already, and they're always excited to start up again next year. There will be a club fair at the end of this summer, which student council members will be volunteering at to guide students. And this will entail several clubs promoting themselves and offering opportunities for the upcoming freshmen to join. Along with this, in the summer, there will be an engineering summer clinic at UMass Lowell, offered to the first 30 students who decide to sign up. Additionally, on May 30th, the TMHS Fine and Performing Arts Department went on a field trip to Franklin Park Zoo along with Fennel Hall. Some sports updates I have include that many sports seasons have already ended. And all the sports did amazing this whole season and at MVCs, and some people even ended up qualifying for states in their sports, along with all states. However, the girls softball team is still playing, and they made it to the state semifinals after an astounding 13-0 win against Bedford. The fall sports meeting was on Monday, June 12th, where students could explore the possibilities for the fall sports. And just some extra information I have is that the senior prom along with the promenade was held right prior to it. This was on Tuesday, June 6th. And senior week was held last week with graduation being last Friday as well. On June 6th and 7th, the freshman students took the final MCAS of the year, which was the Biology MCAS. And all AP classes have had their meetings for the upcoming school year and contracts are due by the end of this week, some being due prior already. Classes for next year have also been pretty much solidified as meetings with guidance counselors were abundant and vital in fixing the many scheduling problems which the majority of students, including myself, had. And gold cards, which are papers necessary in order to exempt a final, they were given out these past few weeks. And we finally reached the last week of school, meaning that the final exams are going to be held until tomorrow, which is Thursday. Well, Friday will be a makeup day. So that's really all I have to say tonight, and I hope everyone has a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Rania. Any comments from anybody? Thank you very much. And we now move on to our zoo project. Students from the Ryan Elementary School. Mrs. Sarah Regan, if you'd like to introduce.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, with us are members, student representatives of grades five and six from the Ryan School, along with their amazing STEM teachers, Ms. Eileen Lindsay and Ms. Kim Hilson. This is the Extreme Zoo Makeover Project. The students are here with you tonight and their parents, thank you for being here with them, to showcase a year-long STEM project-based learning project. I'd like to just remind everyone that STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, and it's an integrated approach to solving problems in the world and to make the world a better place for all living creatures, people and animals alike. So the team is going to take you down the year-long journey they had in doing just that. So Ms. Lindsay and Ms. Hilson, if you could lead the presentation.
Thank you, everyone. I'm just going to start off, we have, can you just raise your hand? This is Mrs. Lindsay and Mrs. Hilson. They're blending in with the students right now because our students have grown quite a bit since they arrived at the Ryan. The students are going to do all of the talking, except I'm going to have to pass this along. So for our students, please just remember to tell everybody your name, because they don't all know who you are. So let's start off with our introduction.
Hi, I'm Samantha Conroy. And the challenge this year for Massachusetts STEM Week was for student engineers to redesign habitats for animal in captivity. Each team of engineers needed to design a habitat that met specific needs of the animal of their choosing. And they also needed to engineer an enrichment item for the animal species that would bring out natural behaviors.
Hi, I'm Rose McGuinness. Our school embarked on a school-wide field trip to the Franklin Park Zoo to observe different animal exhibits. While there, we took notes from different design perspectives. Stakeholders included the animal, the zookeeper, and the zoo guest. We noted what we liked about the habitats and we saw what we didn't like.
Just can I just remind you, nice and loud, that link is not really picking us up. So give it, give it a cheerleading voice for your cheering voice.
Hi, I'm Sarah Spazucco. We, we as engineers researched using graphs, pictures, and articles, and created a table listing the pros and cons of animals in the wild and animals in captivity.
Hi, I'm Kira Tamborillo. We completed a research guide for our animal to identify the needs of the animal and to help the development of the habitat.
Hi, I'm Carter Fleming. We developed an enrichment item which met the needs of at least two of the five categories: social, cognitive, physical, sensory, and nutritional.
Hi, I'm Mary Jane Price. And we also created animals out of paper mache in art classes, or art class to place in or next to the exhibit.
Hi, my name is Desta. And during this project, we used CoSpaces to design a virtual habitat before making the physical model. We used the block coding to create our habitat in virtual or augmented reality.
Hi, I'm Erin McCusker. All of this work culminated with the Ryan School Extreme Zoo Makeover on June 5th. We're, oh, God. We were, we were able to showcase our work. My classmates and I came to share our design, to share their designs and thoughts on the, on the design challenge.
We have a few pictures, as you can see, and I think we would be happy to take any questions, but that's the end of their explanation for now, until you ask them some good questions. Yes, let's do it. So you're each getting a little field trip in and of itself. They'll all be over to show you something.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
You can spread out. Right around here. It's my favorite animal.
The leaves.
Very cool. That's okay.
In a lot of trees, in a lot of spaces for the sloth.
Makes them cooler.
We have some that did them on the marsh. Put it in your hands, so you have a cube.
Want to show me the other one?
Did you have a lot of fun doing this project?
Yeah.
It seemed really cool.
Thank you, guys.
You're in fifth grade?
Yeah.
All in fifth grade? Yeah, yeah, awesome. I hope you have a great summer. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, girls.
My daughter's in sixth grade.
Thank you, guys.
You should go back in front of Anderson, because you may get a couple of questions. She's a 6C. Are you 6C? Oh, okay. Oh, there it is.
The zoo designers, whenever you're done, you can come right back over where you were standing on the other side?
Oh, yeah, very cool. Very cool. Is that like the leader? Looks like the leader. Was it enough to just plan for food and shelter? Did you just plan for food and shelter for the animal?
Wow, so not only is...
Put anything else in there to make sure it thrives?
It's pretty cool, pretty neat.
Put some things nice.
Did you guys like STEM a lot this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's your favorite subject? Yeah. You guys going into seventh grade? Sixth, actually. One more year at the Ryan, right?
Very cool.
Excellent, awesome job.
Thank you, very cool.
Thank you, guys.
Did you see this?
We all looked at just one.
Snakes getting into this. Cool, why'd you pick America? Oh, okay. Very cool. Nice job, buddy. You're the last one up here, too. Nice job, bud.
Any questions from anybody from the committee to the students or their teachers?
No questions, but just comment. You know, as a, as a committee, you know, we've, you know, we've seen a lot of different things in the various STEM programs within the district. And one of the things that, from a technology standpoint, I know that we've been very supportive of is trying to continue to drill that down into the lower grade levels. So to see, you know, kids at the fifth grade level here showing off some of their accomplishments and some of their learnings over the course of the last school year, it's pretty incredible. So thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you, families, for bringing them. But keep up the good work. You guys got one more year at the Ryan School, so another year STEM at the Ryan School, it sounds like. And kudos to Ms. Lindsay and Ms. Hilson as well for all the, all the hard work with these guys.
And I can, Mr. Parsons.
I have to ask this. What is all of yours' favorite subject? As a science teacher, I love to hear it. This was great, thank you all.
No, thank you. I have to say that I personally benefited from this project because I now have a two-foot-tall giraffe living in my kitchen. But you guys did a great job. And for the speakers who came up here, it can be a little bit daunting sometimes to speak in front of a crowd, and you all did a great job. So kudos to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say something very similar because I also have a lion living in my dining room now that we're trying to find a home for. So thank you so much for being here. Everybody did such a great job sharing. This is my favorite part about doing this job and getting to see a sneak peek into all of the work that you're doing, all of the hard work the teachers are putting into making sure the kids are having fun while they're learning. So thank you for that. Excellent.
And my only comment is to, also, the students are fantastic, of course, I've mentioned, but the, for the teachers who went above and beyond on this project and seeking out this opportunity for students. I think we collectively, if you listen to us talk each month, really, that's important to us, is that students have opportunities that have hands-on learning, that have, you know, practical application. And the fact that the superintendent, the administration supports it, your principals support it, we support it. So thank you so much to the teachers that made this happen. Thank you for having us, and certainly a big round of applause.
Just a sampling of the 520-plus kids that we have. These were some of our more loquacious students, and we knew that they'd be happy to share. But I do want to say the entire staff and the entire building dedicated everything they had to make this come to life, and we're extremely proud of this work. We look forward to seeing this every other year, we think. So thank you all, thank you for your time tonight.
I'll entertain a motion for a short recess so the students can leave with their families.
So moved, please.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Mrs. Bea Johnny-Smith, a second by Mr. Russo for a five-minute recess. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. So if you want to gather your things, he'll...
And it's now 6:51. We reconvene back in open session after the zoo presentation has left. So at this time, we will be welcoming the Tewksbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council to speak, but...
Madam Chair, with us tonight is the Tewksbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council co-chair, Ms. Deana Mancini, who is going to give us her annual update on the CPAC's goings-on. So Deana, if you want to take your place at the podium.
Feel free to introduce anybody joining you.
Do I talk in here?
That's, that's more for the video.
Okay.
It doesn't really project.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Deana Mancini. I'm one of the co-chairs of the CPAC. I would like some of our new, these are our new parents-at-large to introduce themselves.
Crystal Anderson.
Christine Metzger.
And I kind of just surprised them and said, "You guys can come up here while I get the presentation." So, all right, let's get started. So as we do every year, we just want to review for people and share for people who don't know this information, what is a CPAC? So it stands for Tewksbury Special Education Parents Advisory Council. And it is a required organization in Massachusetts. Every city and town has to have a CPAC. So a CPAC is a public body that serves as an advisor to the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. In addition, the CPAC has a duty to meet regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the district's special education programs. Who can be a part of the CPAC? So our CPAC is a group of parents and caregivers who have children on IEPs or 504s and other interested parties. And so for us, our interested parties are residents, so whether they have kids in the system, not in the system anymore, or they don't have kids at all, local advocates, teachers, and other staff members. Those make up our interested party members. Together, we work to support each other in raising and educating students with disabilities. We host business meetings, support groups, family engagement events, and informational workshops. So we just had elections last month, and you can see, these are our new and old board members. So Ann and I will continue as co-chairs. Peg is going to continue as our publicity secretary. Michelle is our new recording secretary. And then we have our parents-at-large, Crystal, Christina, Sarah, Elle, and Tricia. And some have been with us for a while, and some are new. So I do want to take a moment here to recognize and thank all of the CPAC board members who volunteer their time. It's a lot of work, raising kids in general. It's a lot of work raising kids with disabilities. And these people go above and beyond to make sure that they're attending our CPAC meetings, they're attending PAC meetings, they are volunteering to stand at tables and give out brochures, meet with parents, field questions and concerns. So I, for one, have been doing this for a while. I appreciate everyone who has supported me throughout the years and taking time out of their families to come and support other families. So our highlights this year, we've had some family engagement events. So we participated in the Safe Halloween event. We did a Wear Yellow for CPAC Awareness. So CPAC awareness was November. It was declared by the governor. And all of the local CPACs did a Wear Yellow event on the same day to, to bring attention and awareness to CPACs. We did a Tewksbury Police Station visit. We've done a playground social, and then we were at the Special Education Resource Fair, which was last week. And in collaboration with the district, we did the Basic Rights Workshop, which was done by the Federation for Children. And then the BCBA's and behavior specialists put on several other workshops throughout the year on behaviors, de-escalation, social-emotional interventions, and functions of behavior. We've also had four virtual parent support groups. We chose to hold those virtually because parents can attend without any added obstacles of worrying about childcare or rushing around with dinner or all that. You can just get your family settled, sit down at the table, and log on to Zoom. So we've done that four times. And then we've collaborated with the other PACs this year. So I do want to take some time to recognize and thank the other PACs for coming up with ideas and also supporting our ideas. So we've noticed more sensory-friendly times, and that's like a time a half an hour before an event that they allow smaller groups of kids to come in without, you know, crowds. And it's helped a lot of the kids who struggle with large crowds and maybe some social anxiety. And I understand it's hard enough to find parents to volunteer for events in general, and then you add another half hour to an event, you need more people to volunteer. So the fact that they're willing to do that and support families, we really appreciate that. Also, especially the Heathbrook PAC, they have let us use their Zoom account, which has been great. And then they also have included us. They're going to be doing a website, so they're going to be including the CPAC. So we really do appreciate our other, our friends at the other PACs. So one of the things we've done this year is to advocate for parents. Some parents came to us with a concern about police involvement in schools. So we did bring this concern to administration, and we happened to have some members of the Tewksbury Police Department with us at that meeting. We talked about the concern. We're trying to resolve people's concerns, and we're going to continue to monitor the situation and work with the school system to make sure that this doesn't come up as an issue. So it is really nice when parents come to us and bring us information because it can be a very lonely and stressful environment. When it's your kid that's struggling, it's hard, and you're going through a lot, and it's very overwhelming. So to be able to connect with other parents who have been through it before or who have supported other parents who have been through it before is, you know, is very important to us. We want to continue to do that. So I do encourage parents that if there is anything that's going on, you do want to reach out to us and just bounce ideas off and, or just to have someone to talk to that understands exactly what you're going through. We're here. One of our, we didn't have a goal to increase attendance at meetings, but just, I think, by nature of some of the things we were doing, we did see an increase in attendance. So we started off the beginning of the year with our business meetings with between four and eight people. And by the end of this year, we've seen between 13 and 18 members. And also, we've had more attendance on Zoom. So we've seen a really nice attendance improvement, and we want to continue that momentum going forward. So we have three goal areas for next year. We want to continue with the family engagement events, things like, which we were supposed to do this year. We were supposed to go to the Tewksbury Fire Department, but we're doing that next year for sure. We're also going to do a visit to the credit union. We want to do another playground social. And we want to bring back the CPAC Day on the Hill. So before COVID, we went to the State House with our kids. We met with state representatives, and we had a really nice day there. They took us on a tour, they sat and they talked to us, we all had lunch together. That kind of got lost with COVID and all of those things, and we want to bring that back for this year. For district engagement, we'd like to host a Meet the Administrators Night. We know there's a lot of newer faces in administration, so we thought it'd be good for parents to connect with some of the new administrators in town. And also, a town near us has done a Transition Night, where the different schools talk about how they support kids at each level of the transitions. And then they get ideas from parents about what they could do better to support kids. Our kids go through a lot of transitions in this town, there's a lot of different schools. We've also heard that some of the transitions are not always that smooth. Continuity of services is not always where people would like to see it. So we really want to bring people together and talk about this, and then also talk about what the school is doing to support kids as they go from one school to the other. And then for support, one of the things we want to do is explore social options for kids with disabilities. We've had people reach out to us. You know, I have a 10-year-old with sensory issues, we're new in town, we're looking for some people to hang out with. I have a 15-year-old that has social anxiety, but we're looking to try to make connections. So sometimes kids don't fit that box. If you don't play sports, or if you're not on a dance team, it's, it's hard because you don't have those natural social connections. So what we're trying to do is figure out a way so to grow the, because there's a lot of things that kids bring to the table that aren't necessarily part of a team. So we want to make sure that we can have, make kids feel like they belong and that they're connected with other kids around their age. We also, pre-COVID, we were trying to put together some supports for siblings of kids with disabilities, and we really want to try to do that again. You know, a lot of attention goes to the kids with disabilities. We want to make sure that those siblings feel supported in their development as well. And finally, we want to increase inclusion at school-based activities. A lot of the things, as I mentioned, sensory-friendly times, that is a really promising step. We really feel like we could do more. And we also want to make sure that inclusion is at the forefront of every teacher, administrator, staff member, to make sure that there's not pockets of kids that are left out or left behind, and we really remove any obstacles to kids' participation in school-based activities. So I threw in a quote here, "There is no greater disability in society than the inability to see a person as more." So I don't want people to view kids with disabilities or adults with disabilities as somehow less than. We want to make sure that we create an environment here in Tewksbury where kids are celebrated for everything that they bring to the table and are not shamed for... and are not shamed for maybe what they can't do. So for more information, we do have our very last meeting of the year. It's tomorrow night. It's here at the high school, 7 o'clock. It will be in person. We have a short agenda, and then we'll have a little bit more of a social time afterwards. That's why it's in person. I put our email up there for anyone who's interested in reaching out to us. We have a Facebook business page, and we have a Facebook support page as well. And there's some of you guys. That was us last week at the Special Education Fair. So thank you very much for your time. Also, this slideshow is from Slides2Go, so I wanted to make sure I credited.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee?
Thank you for coming and sharing some information. So, I mean, as the CPAC is an advisor to the school committee, how can this committee, you know, collectively? I know we have representatives that go to your meetings monthly and whatnot, and obviously, report back to us as a committee monthly. What, if anything, can we continue to do to continue to support the CPAC as an advisor to us? Is there anything more that we should be doing or less of, more of, stop, start, anything in that regards?
How much time do you have here? So first of all, Kayla and Nick have been amazing. We are very, very, very appreciative to them. They have been kind, open-minded, patient. They've dealt with a lot from us. We can be a lot sometimes, and we've, we can be a lot, we've been a lot over the years. But they have understood where we're coming from and that our intent is really to make things better, not just for our own kids, but for our community. Everyone wins when everyone's kids' needs are being met. So obviously, you're all always welcome to come to our meetings and to learn more. But if we continue to have that kind of relationship where we can bring concerns, and they're received, and we can, we can meet about them and and just talk about things openly and honestly, because the only way we're going to make things better for everybody is if we can talk about things, even the bad things, even the things we make us uncomfortable. That's the best way for us to all improve as a community. And for you guys to always be willing to read those long emails that I might send with a lot of information, and just read them with an open mind and understand, like, where we're all coming from with that. So I encourage you, just you can always come to our meetings, even if you're not our liaisons. But we're, we have two very amazing liaisons, and we really do appreciate their time and their efforts and patience with us.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Parsons?
Thank you for the kind words. This, I have another eight months working with you. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, I just have a question. What's the best way for new families in the district or like especially our kindergarten kiddos to learn about your group?
So attending a meeting is always a good idea. Joining the Facebook support group is a good way to connect with people. A lot of people are posting information about resources, social situations, and things like that. Sending us an email and just if you have any questions. We try to go to the open houses in the fall to give out our information and recruit people. Because it can be especially overwhelming in the beginning when you're first entering the school system, your kids first on an IEP. There's a lot of things that are overwhelming. We've all been there. But that's a good way just to, Facebook's probably the best way to get information.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you for being here. And again, also, like Nick said, thank you for the kind words. I'm really excited for your membership increase and the number of people that have stepped up to help. Your board members. I'm excited to see your new pals and the collaboration with the other PACs, because I think that that is so important, because they do have a larger community sometimes that you can reach out to more people and connect. And and sometimes, they don't know what they don't know. And having you there with them is very important. So thank you.
My only comments, super excited about some of the stuff you added this year with sibling support. I think that's fantastic. I know at the high school level, I can see where that could be helpful. At all levels, really, but I think, you know, some students, as they age out, maybe are leaving their their family home, you know, it might be hard, you know. So I think I'd like to see some of those new things, and then also the social opportunities. I know you guys have been doing some great stuff, parks and stuff like that. So it's a lot of time out of your lives. So thank you for the time that you dedicate to other families on top of, you know, what we all go through with ourselves anyway. So, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any comments?
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, nicely done.
And next, we have our Tewksbury Public Schools STEM IT update. Mrs. Terry, over again?
Yeah, Madam Shear. Jason Stamp, our Director of IT and our Director of STEM, is, what a wonderful opportunity, right after we just saw that presentation, is here to give you his end-of-year update on the many ways we're looking to improve our programming, both in safety and security, if you remember the audit he did earlier or had done and presented to you, and then how we're going to grow our STEM program K through 12 in the next coming year. Okay? Obviously, we've put a lot on Jason's plate, if you can imagine, being in charge of the entire IT team and all of the infrastructure in the district, as well as science, technology, engineering, and math. But you can see really that priority showing in the lessons and the projects and the, just the curriculum updates that he's going to show you a little bit about now. Go ahead, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you. So good evening, everyone. Thanks for inviting me back to talk about STEM and IT. So, I'm sure this is working. So my purpose tonight is to speak to you about the progress we made on implementing recommendations from the data privacy audit that we had in the fall. Also, to share with you how math is going in K-4. Provide an update on the digital literacy and computer science vertical alignment progress and share what I see as next steps in that. Here we go. So I'll start with the privacy audit. Might be too far away for all these clicks. In the initial timeline, so this is sort of a copy of the slide that you've seen already from the fall. In the initial timeline, I presented in the fall/winter, I listed items we would work on right away, items that we'd work on during the school year, items that we'd work on during next school year, and items that would be ongoing or continuously worked on. I've highlighted completed items with green checkmarks. Items with blue checkmarks are in progress, and the rest are still in queue. I don't know if you can tell which ones are green and blue. Hopefully, you can. One of the items that I'm sort of the most proud of is the distribution of our weekly Tuesday tech tips, which our technology integration coaches produce every week and send out to our staff. This quick information blast each week helps our teachers keep up to date with the latest cybersecurity updates, as well as other helpful tech tips. The teachers like that they can expect an email each week, and we keep running, we keep a running archive that teachers can go back to if they need to. So in order to track our progress through this, we created a Gantt chart, which is in, as far as spreadsheets, Coach, I love spreadsheets. It's one of the coolest-looking spreadsheet. So we listed here our tasks, more specifically. One of the biggest tasks that was related to improve, was related to improving secure communications. As you can see, we created a subcommittee. We began researching products sort of right away. I don't know if you can, it's pretty small, but you can see the dates up there. We started with products suggested by Steve Smith, who conducted our audit, to see how they worked and if they fit our needs. We're still currently in this process. We haven't found a solution that fits us yet. We've looked at four others, and we're still trying to sort of find something that fits our needs. So we were hoping to start implementation of a product at the start of the school year, but we may be looking at implementing it at the start of 2024. All right, so the next piece is math. Sorry, this is a long presentation. Lot of stuff in STEM. So math instruction has changed in Tewksbury, and it's wonderful. I'd like to give you some updates on the progress that we've been making. So as you can see, this has been a multi-year process, starting back in 2017. In the last two years, we've been in Phase 4. In the 21-22 school year, grades K and 1 implemented the new math units with all of the resources, new resources that we purchased. And this year, grades 2, 3, and 4 have been implementing the new math units with all of the new resources. We've been collecting standards-based data in Otis since the fall of 2020. So these charts represent the percentage of students that have reached mastery in the standards that you can see listed at the bottom there. The, the colors are the school year, so you can see, you know, each standard represents, in those three bars, they represent the three school years for each standard there. This school year is in pink. So now, I want to note that we haven't collected enough data over enough time to conclude that our work is effective. However, the initial data is very promising. And I don't know, and I have a little star up there, 2023. This data that I, I put this together about two months ago. We do have end-of-year benchmarks that I haven't calculated into this yet. So the pink data is actually not a full year's worth of data. And as you can see, a lot of the bars are already beating the previous two years. Let's see. So this is grades K and 1. So K and 1, they were the first to implement a year ago. And as you can see, like I just said, the data is higher than the previous two years in all but a few standards. For grades 2, I keep going the wrong way. I apologize. For grades 2, 3, and 4, this is their first year of implementation. But the data is still promising, and it's showing sort of the same patterns as it did for K and 1. I highlighted grade 2 here because actually, grade 2 started the implementation process halfway through last year in January. They, they saw their counterparts in their school in grades K and 1 start the implementation and the things that were happening in the classroom. And we're seeing the excitement in the kids, and they said, why don't we just start now? So in January, they began. So that's why I highlighted theirs. But again, we're already seeing the, more students at mastery in these standards in this school year, even though it hasn't even been completed. The data, this, I mean, this data looks great to me. I'm a math guy. I like the slides. I like the graphs. I like all the spreadsheets. But what about the kids' experience? So I'd argue that that's actually better than the scores. We're seeing kids excited about math. The lessons are more hands-on and inquiry-based, fewer worksheets, and more math talks. We celebrate mistakes because we learn more from the mistakes than from our traditional drill and kill. Students have enjoyed the opportunity to share their thinking and are not shy about when they make mistakes. Students have become accustomed to the idea of beginning each lesson with a warm-up and look forward to taking on new challenges posed during these activities. We believe our students will be better problem solvers, therefore, better prepared for today's fast-changing world when they leave Tewksbury. This implementation wasn't easy, and our teachers rose to the challenge to make this change. They should be applauded for their perseverance and their hard work. Our students are benefiting from their efforts. So we did reach out to some teachers, asked them for some, you know, for their feedback. They filled out a form, gave us a lot of positives, a lot of pros and cons. These are things that we were hoping we could improve on next year, things like that. But I grabbed a few quotes that sort of struck me. I'll just read one of them here. "It's really impressive the way kids have been able to internalize the information. They seem to understand the concepts way more now than they ever have." All right, so now on to computer science. So computer science has been my focus this year. My team has worked collaboratively with our, our computer science teachers to begin the process of vertical alignment. The way we've done this, well, actually, first, so we've built actually a really strong digital, digital science program here in Tewksbury. I'm sure you are aware, we have computer science in K through 12. We have a computer science teacher for all of those levels. We currently, but this work currently, and we have curriculum, obviously, for all these levels. But currently, what we're doing is we're fine-tuning that curriculum, and we're looking for gaps and redundancies. So we're looking at our lessons. We're checking to see that we're meeting all the state standards. So to do this, we needed a committee to inventory what is currently happening in our classrooms and to identify where the gaps are or where there's unnecessary repetition. So these are sort of the phases. We started with creating a steering committee. We did some inventory, which I'll show you on the next slide. We identified needs, and now we're at the point where we're going to start developing our overviews. So this is a spreadsheet that Desi uses to help districts to do their vertical alignment. So we called it an inventory. So we're basically going through. And the way it works for computer science is the standards are grade band. So you have K to 2, you have a list of standards for grades K through 2, then you have a list of standards for grades 3 through 5, then 6 through 8, then 9 through 12. So the vertical alignment process has to be, you have to think about those grade bands when you do the vertical alignment process. You can't just think, here's grade 3, and we're going to hit every single standard at grade 3. It's just not going to happen. And you might be hitting standards in grade 4 that grade 3 is also hitting, so now you have redundancy. So you have to sort of break it out by grade band. And so what we did is we started with this inventory. And if you just look across the rows, the first row there says, the standard says, type five words per minute times, the grade level. I can't really read that far away. My eyes are getting old. But what we did was we said, who's, who's hitting that standard and how are you hitting that standard? So the steering committee got together, and they started filling in this grid. I hit that standard in grade 3. This is the resource I use, and these are the activities that I do. So if you notice, if you look across a row, and none of the grade levels have put something in that row, that's where we have a gap. So we have to fill those gaps. So that's what we started with, was our inventory. So this summer, what we're doing now, that that sheet is filled out, and that was sort of a snapshot of when it first started. So there's actually, those grids are filled in a lot more than that. What we're looking at now is each grade level will have a curriculum overview, built this revised this summer, where the unit names will be on the left, and on the far right will be listed which standards to hit. And then all of those will be sort of synchronized together to make sure we are hitting all the standards for all the grade levels. And through that also, we'll be identifying which resources and which activities address those standards. Okay, so for next steps, so like I said, we'll be looking at the overviews this summer. For next steps, though, we're actually going to be looking more directly at the units of study. And we use the UBD process for our units, which is called, it's Understanding by Design. It's a backwards design process for developing units of study. And there are three stages in those units. So we'll be focusing next year in our steering committee on Stage 1 and developing and refining the goals of each unit. And then the following year after that, we'll be looking at Stage 2 and Stage 3. And Stage 2 is developing the assessments that reach those goals that we've set by the unit. And then Stage 3 is what is the learning plan? And all that sort of happens, you know, the teachers are doing that. But to formalize that and set the goals and to have all those units written, it sort of develops, it helps us to secure a strong foundation for our curriculum. All right, so, so next steps for all the stuff. So the next steps for me is, well, we'll be, I'll be continually looking at the standards in Otis for all these content areas. We're continually, I'll be going into classrooms and doing observations. Basically, it's just collecting data. So I collect my data through observations. I collect my data through looking at what assessments and what the standards data is in Otis, as well as surveying our staff and our principals and seeing what the needs are. And then from there, it's just a cyclical process. So we, we do something, we put an intervention in, we build it, then we go back, we reassess what needs to be refined and tweaked, and we just keep going around in a circle, and it just never ends. So those are our next steps. So at that point, I mean, at this point, do you have any questions for me? There's a lot of stuff. Wasn't as exciting as the zoo, but...
Yeah. Any questions?
I don't have any at this time, no.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for coming and presenting, because this is, I'm a math guy too, so I'm, you know, a little envious of the things that you're doing here, so thank you.
Yeah, I am a huge fan of a Gantt chart too, so, thanks for using them. And I think that this work is very important for us as AI becomes more of a factor in the real world when these kids come out of school. So it's good that, to see that you identified your gaps and you're working on plans to fill those gaps so that our kids can benefit from it and really be prepared after... fill those gaps so that our kids can benefit from it and really be prepared after high school to go out in the real world with these tools behind them. So thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Parsons?
Say anything we can do to support you. You seem like you have a broad range of responsibilities.
I'll think about that, I'll send you an email. I'm sure I could come up with something.
Thank you for all that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
So I have a few comments. One, on the audit, thank you for doing that work. I know that was, you were tasked with that at the beginning of the year, in addition to a lot of other things that you're doing. And I think we felt that was important, so, you know, we all, I'm sure collectively appreciate that that work is ongoing, continuous, and that you're kind of checking back with us on that. I thank you for that. And then seeing all this other stuff that you're doing, it's like, wow, that's a lot. But I will mention, ask also, on the curriculum for the, for the digital learning, is that homegrown, or is that...
Well, the resources are not. The resources, we use code.org, and there's a few others that are escaping me right now. But code.org is one of the major resources that we use for our, to build the lessons. But the curriculum itself, all of our curriculum is technically homegrown, because you use the state standards, you build your goals based on the state standards, and then you, you develop your plan and then go from there. So yeah, all of our curriculum is homegrown. If you think of the curriculum, and, you know, the envelope, that what is curriculum, the resources themselves, you know, we farm up, if you want to think of it that way.
And then, is there any way where some of these standards are met, kind of embedded in other programming or in other subject matter?
Yes, yes. So that's the other piece. So this steering committee that's working with the DLCS, the Digital Literacy Computer Science, is also working with, in conjunction with the STEM programming. I just didn't mention it because...
It's a lot.
There's enough slides already. But yeah, no, good question. So we, we're also doing the same inventory, we have an exact same spreadsheet, but with all the STEM and engineering standards. And when they, when they cross over, then we check it off as a box on both.
Okay.
So yeah.
And those are all my questions, but I do appreciate you coming today and being so thorough. I'm sure you'll hear more questions as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, what a wonderful dovetail into the next presentation. You heard a lot about standards, collecting data on standards, you hear us talk about standards-based instruction, and the one missing piece that we, this district has had on its list for a long time is standards-based report cards. It's all very connected, right? We teach to them, and now it's, this is an opportunity with not only our STEM curriculum district-wide, but our new ELA curriculum, and to have that standards-based reporting. So under the direction of our amazing Assistant Superintendent, Director of Literacy and Director of STEM, he's here as well, Jason Stamp, Felicia could not be with us tonight, they have a plan and a presentation to share our district vision of bringing that standards-based report card to K to 4. So I think it's going to take just a minute to pull up that presentation. I believe you have that in your packet as well.
Sure, why not? That's wonderful.
So our next item on the agenda is Citizens Forum. Seeing nobody here to speak, so we can move on from there. And then the approval of minutes?
Yep. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 31, 2020-23 regular meeting.
A second? A motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous. Okay, Mrs. McDarmit?
Thank you so much for stalling and getting some business done while I got set up here, and I was lucky to have our trustee with his IT hat on helping me out. So thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I am so excited to share this work, the work that we've done on the standards-based report cards and our whole plan for implementation in the 23-24 school year. I know that this has been a long time coming for Tewksbury, and I know I can speak for myself and Superintendent Regan and the many involved in the Standards-Based Report Card Committee, that we're all so excited to bring this to life for the students and families of Tewksbury Public Schools. So just a quick overview, I'll provide you with an, just a general overview of standards-based report cards. That will include the purpose or the why behind this shift, a brief comparison between a traditional report card and how we'll, and our new standards-based report card, how we will report the grades as we move from the traditional A, B, C, D that we're all used to and comfortable with, and the next steps for implementation in the 23-24 school When I arrived in Tewksbury, I told myself that I wouldn't change anything right away and that I would kind of sit back and watch, and here I am, making a liar out of myself right here. One of the things that I noticed right away from talking to teachers was that we didn't have a standards-based report card in place, and the superintendent and I had shared some conversations. I still planned to kind of let it ride out and see how things moved along as I was learning and observing and getting to know people. I was invited to many PLCs and to many team meetings with teachers and talking to the district directors around our need for standards-based grading, because we are a standards-based district. Obviously, you're hearing all about standards-based instruction all the time. So I decided to throw a feeler out in email to the elementary team and offer a standards-based report card steering committee. In March, I did this. I just thought, let me just see if anybody is interested in doing this. And on the next slide, you'll see that I had an incredible amount of interest. You can see by this lengthy list of teachers and administrators that there was a great deal of interest and excitement around moving forward. We were lucky to have classroom teachers from all grade levels, EL teachers, special education teachers, Unified Arts teachers, math, literacy and tech coaches, as well as our K-4 principals and our STEM and literacy director, who were, they were all instrumental in supporting me with all of the research, planning, and troubleshooting that went into this project and will continue through implementation, of course. So I just want to thank the amazing team of educators who hunkered down with us and took on this work. In March, we set out a timeline, and we really stuck to it, even if we had to add some extra meetings and work a little bit outside of the meeting time. It was really, really fun to be a part of this. So I want to start by just sharing a brief video from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's like a four-minute video, but I'm only going to show you about two minutes of it. And, oh boy, let's hope you can hear it. Where is he? Any chance? Try again?
We're very dedicated to the process of setting high expectations for all of our students here in Massachusetts.
Massachusetts really has an amazing reputation in our country for having a great educational system, and a really big part of that are our standards.
For us, it's a great feeling to know that we have the support of the state that's always looking to progressively meet high expectations.
We believe that every student should be given a great appropriate text every day. And I think when that happens, you see the kids really engage in what they're doing. You see the connections that they're making, and you push their thinking in new ways, whether it's fiction or nonfiction.
To shift your perspective and to see that standards can be this equalizing force to say, by the end of a student's educational career, they will be able to do X, Y, and Z, is transformative, and that's all students, so students with disabilities, multiple states, students struggling for various reasons, and every district in the state matters in Congress.
Our students deserve it, are entitled to the right to equity in education with the rigor that comes with it, irrespective of the district or the school.
When I'm teaching ELA, the standards for all the subject areas are really part of my planning and thinking and goal-setting. As an ELA teacher, I'm able to help them access the curriculum and achieve these standards, first of all, just by believing that they can.
So just a brief, a brief video to show you that this isn't new. This is, you can find these, I'll show you where you can find lots of videos in different subject areas around standards-based learning. What I liked about this video and some of what we heard tonight from our CPAC is the focus on equity, the focus on all students, which has been obviously a district focus here. These standards level the playing field for all of our students and keep our students grounded in inclusionary settings and help to ensure that they're exposed to the same level of instruction as all students. We've been teaching to the standards in Massachusetts now for a long time, and most districts in Massachusetts have implemented a standards-based report card at the elementary level. And so again, I'm really excited to bring this to Tewksbury. I'm hoping that I can get through this without restarting it. Yay. Okay, so why are we doing this? What is the purpose of a standards-based report card? As you know, we're expected to teach to the standards set forth by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and we do do that here in Tewksbury, even without a standards-based grading system in terms of reporting to parents. But by implementing a standards-based report card, it allows us to effectively communicate the progress that each student is making toward those unique individual standards, rather than a subject area as a whole. So this steers us away from comparing students to each other, and it takes us away from factoring into account things like behavior, participation, homework, attendance. It's really focused on the sheer mastery of the standards, all by themselves, regardless of any other factors. As I said before, I think this is the best thing for our students. It levels the playing field for everybody. So even if you are a student who maybe has a little trouble sitting still, or maybe you're struggling to get your homework done for whatever reason, you'll be graded separately on those things than on how you perform on the standards. Now, I suppose one could argue that some of those things may impact your performance on the standards, possibly, but they wouldn't be taken into account separately. You would be judged solely on the mastery. And a lot of the work that Mr. Stamp referred to in terms of aligning the standards and making sure that we're teaching to the standards definitely helps, so it only makes sense that we would want to report on the standards. So where do the standards come from? I wanted to show you that we will be sure that parents can access the standards, and so this is a link. And this just shows you, it's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and all of the standards for all of the subject areas are listed here and can be viewed by all families. So it's not something that we're creating all on our own, it is actually a state expectation. What we will do, because there are so many standards in all of the subject areas, districts across Massachusetts, unfortunately, Massachusetts doesn't have like its own standards-based report card, that would be my dream, but instead, districts are given kind of the freedom to select the priority standards that they want to report on. We could, I know, I gave you a sample of the report card, and you saw how long it is. We couldn't possibly include all of the standards. It doesn't mean we're not addressing those standards, it just means that we've selected as a team the priority standards that we believe would be most valuable to report on. So while we're making this change, we want to provide students and families with a deeper and more meaningful report card. With the new report card, families, again, they will not see that A, B, C that they've come to, you know, they're so comfortable with, that was probably their experience. Instead, they'll see a scale showing how, and you saw that, showing how close their students are coming to mastering all of the priority standards in all of the subject And then I made you a little comparison for traditional grading and standards-based grading. So basically, in traditional grading, if you're not teaching to the standards, you're deciding what you're doing. You might want to do a project on this or that, and you're sort of deciding what's grading. In standards-based grading, you are being measured against the same set of standards. All students at that grade level are being measured against the same set of standards, not each other. Different tasks are given different weights in a traditional grading system. So somebody might decide, your quiz grades are worth 15% of your grade, your homework is worth 30% of your grade, your participation is worth 20% of your grade. None of that has anything to do with grading the standards. So all tasks are designed to demonstrate progress toward mastery of the standards. In a traditional grading system, grades are average, right? You might take all of your test scores and average all your grades. I know my son is constantly doing that in high school, that's what happens in high school, you're always averaging. But in a standards-based grading system, you're again judging the mastery of that standard. And it's not about, you know, a math grade, when you receive a math grade, you don't know how your student is doing on all of the different standards within that unit. You might just see that they got this in math, so they've got a C in math, and you walk away knowing very little from reading that report card about what they still need to work on. In a standards-based report card, you would see, okay, I can see that my student needs to work on telling time to the hour, or my student needs to work on such and such a standard. So it's far more descriptive. In a traditional grading system, teachers often include things like homework effort, conduct, behavior, and again, the standards-based grading is, that's all taken away, it's separate, and it's really just specific to your mastery of each standard. The report cards for us will still be, there will be no change to how the parents access the report card, you will still access the report cards in Aspen at this time. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the terms. So currently, in kindergarten, we have two terms. We decided, through much discussion, much discussion around terms took place on the committee, and we decided to keep kindergarten at the two terms. And progress reports for students on IEPs in kindergarten will go out three times a year. Currently, those progress reports go out four times a year. By law, we're expected to send IEP progress reports with every marking period. So in kindergarten, we will do one additional marking period. Not required, but we feel that that would give parents more, a little more information for their students on IEPs in kindergarten. In grades 1 through 4, we're going to be moving from four terms to three terms. Again, a lot of discussion around this. And interestingly, the discussion didn't really come up around whether to move from 4 to 3, that was a definite, but it was whether to move from 3 to 2, there was a lot of discussion. A lot of districts have moved from three terms to two terms for standards-based grading. There's several reasons for that. One, it's a lot of information that you're getting on a report card. So it's very different than just grading, reading, math, science, social studies. So the teachers have to gather a lot of assessment data in order to have accurate information. We also found that in a lot of the standards, you'll notice if you were to look around in other districts, sometimes there are, you'd see like an NA or something is shaded on a report card because it hadn't, it just hasn't been covered yet, it hasn't been taught yet. So we felt that these, that with the three terms, it was going to be a manageable task out to you. Honestly, four terms in elementary school is, is, is a little crazy because you're just getting them and then you have to grade them. You're just, they're just getting into their routines and figuring out. Remember, when you're in elementary school, you're not only learning, but you're learning how to learn. You're learning how to be in school. So it's very hard to grade that, that first term for teachers. So in terms of the subject areas that will be graded, there's no change to the subject areas. The report card is still going to report out on all of the academic subject areas and the unified arts classes. But you will be getting some more information again within those subject areas, more specific standard information. We also created, I've been talking a lot about how we won't have conduct and behavior and things built into the grade. So, but we want to let parents know how our students doing in, in learning how to be in school and learning how to learn. So we created a habits of character section. And that's really focused on the castle, social emotional skills. And we pulled out relationship skills, responsible decision-making, self-awareness, and self-management. Those will be written as standards and we call these like I can. So we, when we're teaching these standards to the students, we kind of write it in a student-friendly way. I can learn how to accomplish, you know, whatever it might be. And so this, this is where you might see something that says something like interacts respectfully with others. And that would be graded separately, separate from, from the standards. So I'm hoping that families will appreciate that difference and, and see that we're not kind of baking that in to how they're doing in reading, but, but letting parents know separately. And so a parent will walk away knowing this is what my student needs to work on. This is what my student is, is doing great in. This is what my student is excelling in. In terms of performance indicators, we stuck, you heard Mr. Stamp mention Otis. We, I was thrilled when I got here and learned about Otis because you actually have a standards-based grading system in the district, which I know several districts would be so thrilled to have at their fingertips. So our teachers, many, many of our teachers are very comfortable using Otis as a way to kind of house their assessments and keep their standards-based grades. This is part of the reason why teachers were asking and saying, the way that I'm teaching and assessing isn't matching the way that I'm reporting, and it's becoming more and more challenging. So we stuck with the performance indicators that Otis uses. Districts come up with their own. There's, you can do a one, two, three, four. Some do a meeting, exceeding. Some do approaching, developing, proficient. There's all different ways to do this. We stuck with Otis because that's what we have and that's what our teachers are using. And so you can see that basically it's just spelled out for you here. A student who might, might have a knot at mastery. What I do like in the example that I showed you is I feel like that bar that Otis gives families to see, it's pretty clear even without this key that I created here. You can see how close you are to mastering just by looking at that bar. So I like that, that visual rather than having to go back to, to read the, the key and understand what it means. Approaching mastery, a student is making progress toward the standard. That's great. A student's demonstrating probably some varied consistency in independence, still requiring some support. So we wouldn't call that mastery yet. Now the student is near mastery, so they're making significant progress with an increased level of consistency and independence. And then of course, a student has mastered the standard. They're showing consistency. They're showing consistent independence. And we expect that there, there might be some movement because remember, the curriculum, you know, the, the standards of, of performance will increase as the year goes along. So there still could be some, some movement. I selected this quote partially because I really liked it. I feel like it kind of sums it up well. But also, if you notice, it's from Douglas Reeves and it's from 2004. This is a really long time ago. So I know for us, it's feeling like this is new for Tewksbury, but this has been happening for a long time. "By comparing one child's performance to a clear standard, parents, students, and teachers all know precisely what is expected. Every time a student attempts a task, the performance is compared to the standard, not the other student's performances. The most important advantages for students and families are fairness, clarity, and improved learning." There's a wonderful section on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website that has some family resources. So I wanted to show you that here. And if we scroll down and I show you for all of the grade levels, you can, I'll pick grade one. I can go to grade one and there's a few different languages here. Go in English. And this is a whole flyer on how to talk to your child about school, the different, what they'll be learning in literacy, science, technology, and engineering, mathematics, history, and social science, some of the newer expectations for the grade level. And then I mentioned those, what those students can do by the end of first grade. We're hoping that students, we're expecting that students can do this. There's some questions that families can ask their child. There's some areas for focus. So this is a wonderful resource that's right, that's right on our Department of Elementary and Secondary site. And I will, when I create the website and have, do the parent presentations, I will share some of those resources. Also, all of those videos are, are there as well. So that's great. And then our next steps. As a team, the teachers have signed up to do summer curriculum work for standards-based report cards. So we'll be looking to create common assessments so that, common assessments and rubrics are very common assessments for standards-based grading. So that way, when teachers come back in the fall, and I'm, you know, I can't say that they're all going to be ready. We will, of course, be building the plane while we're flying it because we do that a lot in education. But we're hoping to give them a good, a good start. And a lot of this stuff, we really already have. For, for mathematics is a lot already. You can hear Jason talking about STEM and computer science. So we have a lot in place already. And we're working to design and implement professional development for the K-4 teachers. The steering committee gave me a lot of really good ideas in telling me what, what teachers are really going to need to feel like they can hit the ground running with this. And we also had a nice chat with the TTA who also shared how important the professional development will be for teachers. For families, we'll be planning some fall parent presentations. We'll do them, I prefer to do them live. I understand people may not always come out, but we can certainly record it and have, you know, even a voiceover on the website. And then just creating an FAQs. I tried to anticipate, that's kind of how I designed your presentation and what might you be, be thinking and wondering. And so we would have an FAQ section for families as well. I also use slides go. Not as festive as the CPAC. I really liked that slideshow. Mine is a little more subtle. I wanted to keep you calm during this change because change can be uncomfortable for people. So I will take any of your questions and I thank you for your, your time and attention.
Mrs. McDermott, if you're more comfortable, you're certainly welcome.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
And in the meantime, any questions from anyone?
Yeah.
Mr. Parsons?
I have millions, but I'll spare you. So I'm just looking at some of the standards, like I'm seeing one, identify the main topic and retell key details of a text. Like that, that would be a standard that'd be recurring throughout the academic year, I'm sure. You kind of alluded, I just want to clarify, the student's progress toward that standard, it's almost like in, in real time?
Well, it will be in real time for, yes, for teachers who are, when they're, as they're grading, it will be in real time. We will report those three times a year. So they will get that snapshot of where they are at that moment in time.
Right. So like my concern is just, like, let's just say a student, the first term had mastery in that, and that's great.
Yep.
But then the next term, not so much.
Right.
That would be able to, like, that data would show that, okay, this student had a good start. Now we need to do a little more intervention.
Exactly.
They hit mastery, we're good, check the box, move on. There's more accountability longitudinally?
Yeah. So, correct me if I'm not understanding you correctly, but, so yes, you can master a standard. And then as I mentioned, as the, as the kind of ante gets up, right, and the expectations increase, sometimes you will see some, some fluctuation from term to term. Anything can change, of course, in a student's life and, you know, ability to access. So sure. But that would be, that would be communicated on the report card.
Okay.
Did I answer that?
You did.
Okay.
I, I worded that terribly. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Can I just add, can I add to that too? Because part of this, what you're talking about is retention, retention. And that is why our focus is truly on understanding and a different shift in the way we're instructing because we see that all the time. And a grade may be, you know, a grade may represent a single exam. And honestly, is that retention there and that important standard for the duration? So, so you could see fluctuation. Hopefully not.
I like the accountability of that though.
Yeah.
It's not one and done. That's awesome. My standards-based grading makes me very nervous because it's different, but seems like we're right to hit the ground running. I'm excited and nervous.
Yeah, me too.
So it'll be exciting. Thank you.
Mr. Russo?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, I have a few questions actually. So I guess Mr. Stamp kind of touched upon this earlier in his presentation, but I guess do we currently have any gaps present under any of our elementary standards today?
No, I, I think the math curriculum is, and, and the team is, is constantly reviewing and revising the curriculum units. And we do that all summer. We also have steering committees that work on that. For the, for the EL program resource will, this will be our first year of implementation. And so when we're, it comes with a scope and sequence that tells us which standards are, are hit during, addressed during each module. What we may find in that is, we're not sure. There's four modules. We don't know how far teachers will get, especially, it can take three to five years for a full, you know, successful implementation. So we may find some there that we'll have to certainly keep an eye on.
Yeah. So I guess I sort of, and I, I think about it in my own context of when I was a student here. And I specifically remember being in an AP course in my high school time here. And I specifically remember the teacher saying, we're never going to get to all the material. Don't expect to get a four or five on that exam. One or two is more likely because we just don't have time to cover everything that the AP exam requires. So my, I guess sort of my follow-up question then is, do we have the things in place to, for those educators to be able to get through all those so that students can master the material or the standards for their particular grade level?
Yeah, I believe we do.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll, we're all the way through. We're constantly monitoring to ensure that we do have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then just a couple of the small things. I mean, you talked a lot about Otis. I mean, so do you feel confident that we have the necessary tools in-house for our staff?
Yes.
This did come up a little bit in a meeting that we had yesterday. So.
I do. I'm, I'm, I do, more than, more than I've, I've seen in my previous districts. I think initially, there will be teachers who are not comfortable yet using Otis.
Yeah.
And in that way, we're telling, we will help them to report the same way they do now. It would be data entry into Otis, just like right now they do data entry into Aspen. So they can keep all, they can still use all of the rubrics, all of the common assessments, but use it outside of, of Otis. And then they would go in. And I don't think that many teachers will continue doing that for too long because I think they're going to see that once you're using Otis and using the assessments that we've designed and housed there, that it will make your life a whole lot easier. And what you'll really be doing is just, we'll just be running the report card that already exists. It won't be this separate, I have to sit down and enter, and enter all these grades.
So that actually probably answers the next question then. So as far as changes within Aspen from the educator side, does anything need to be changed on the backend there? Or is it, do we have things in place?
Well, they just won't enter the report card grades into, into Aspen anymore. We will instead upload the report card to Aspen for families. Are you going to add something?
I was, Madam Chair, I don't know if anyone has been on this committee this long and Jason, I think it was, we actually purchased Otis intentionally because the caveat was it could collect data from every type of data we have in the district, attendance, grades, MCAS, benchmarks, and it would produce a standards-based report card. It was the only tool of its kind. I think that was in 2017 or 18, and, and we knew. We also knew it was a heavy lift to get all of our teachers, especially K-4, who are not as, weren't, I shouldn't say not, as comfortable. The onset of all the support and our directors and our assistant to really bring this together now is commendable. And keep in mind, we also purchased DESA SEL through Aperture for the same purpose, to give us that data and to, again, dovetail that standards-based data into habits of, of the character. You know, these, these tools that we have are coming together. The ease of use, teachers seeing the benefit towards the end game are really, it's a, it's a nice pairing of all of that time and effort and vision. And again, this team to really see that and understand in our younger, the teachers of our younger grades, knowing we have support, we have help. We know there are people that come in and model and show and PD around how to now really use Otis rather than just enter the data. It, it's really, I, I'm, I'm really proud of the whole team, but it's a full cycle of how we brought all of this and the vision and just, you know, this team, they got out of their way and look at what they've done since March.
And they have made all of the decisions as a team.
Yeah.
We facilitated conversations, right, principals and the directors. And we hashed things out and, you know, we, we went round and round in the same meeting with, you know, maybe three or four different decisions sometimes. So I, I do, I feel honestly, I can say that the teachers feel ownership of the decisions that we made. And for teachers who were not on the committee, and this is going to be new for, there's no doubt there's anxiety and worry. But I, knowing that, we, we are sure to, you know, ensure that they've got the supports that they need.
You have a lot of champions that you listed up there.
Yeah.
That can help championship that.
Yeah.
Last question is, do, at the individual grade bands, do the standards change from term one to term two to term three? Are they the same standards throughout the whole school year?
Some will, some will change and some will, some will stay.
Okay.
What's neat about Otis is that we don't have to manually do that. Otis, because of what you're assessing, Otis will do it all by itself. So parents won't receive a report card, which I think is a little frustrating for families with standards-based report cards. When you receive a report card and it's got like an NA, we didn't, we didn't teach this. We didn't teach informational writing this term, right? Instead, it won't even show up on the report card.
Okay.
So it will be less confusing for families.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Those are great questions. Thank you.
Angela, you interested?
So just kind of dovetailing off that a little bit, for the standards that will be consistent throughout the year, will parents be able to see the, either the mastery or the decline from term to term?
From term to term.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So in order to do that, so that was one of the things that we talked a lot about. That's a function of Otis. So when you get your report card now, you see term one, term two, term three. When you get this new report card, you're only going to see that bar. So sure, could you forget that? Yeah, how that, that, yes, you could. It won't have each individual term outlined. There are, we can, you know, we can certainly print those, you know, those are accessible. They're there. But we believe that families are not going to want a 20-page document to, to scroll through. And in talking with the teachers and chime in if I'm forgetting anything, but we really felt like, the teachers felt like they could, they would be speaking to families about those, those shifts and, you know, be sure to highlight that information for them. Anything else you remember from that? Is that, yeah?
Yes. You're using this as an informational tool for parent conferences, for meetings, so that you have one bar. But behind that, there might be 10 or 12 individual assessments that show, and it can have much more targeted conversations. And it gives teachers and parents something very specific to talk about of where their child is doing extremely well and where they're able to focus next. As opposed to a whole subject area, they're saying, here are the two areas that you really need to spend some attention, time with. And because they'll have meetings in the fall and the spring, it winds up being a perfect time to have not only the time to have not only the report, but also the teachers will have all the data behind that report.
And it, it is a shift. I mean, we talked a lot about using Aspen, because we can do this in Aspen. But then again, it's, it's a completely, you know, it's a, a data entry situation. And so, this is definitely, this is different. This, this report card looks different from other districts, but I think part of that is, we are lucky to have this amazing platform that can support the standards-based grading, and we are fully prepared to help parents understand it.
Yeah, I think that it's just going to be a shift from what they're used to seeing, because typically, parents would go in and say, "Okay, yeah, they're, they're progressing in this area," or, "Wait a minute, what's going on here? We see a decline." So, it will be a shift, but I think this is the right, for sure, the right way to go.
Yeah.
I'm excited about it as much as you guys are, because I think it really gives parents a detailed review of where their children are at based off these different standards.
Well, and that's the thing about the progress, is maybe they would have seen that they had an A in reading and then, you know, went to a B and back to an A. But what does that really tell you about what they're learning in reading? Whether they can decode and sound out words, whether they can encode and, and write words, whether they can read fluently, whether they can understand what they're reading? They, you wouldn't know that from, from just the, the letter grade.
Right.
So, they are getting a lot more information.
And I would just make sure, especially after this first round, that, because I know that there were some issues with having enough time with teachers and teacher conferences in the fall. So, I think this is going to be a big change, so we want to make sure that we allot the right time for parents to work through the teachers.
Good point.
We talked a lot about that on the, on the, this report card steering committee. Conferences came up a lot.
Yeah.
And teachers agree, there's, there's not enough time. So, hopefully, in our next contract, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Miss Bea'Joni Smith?
Thank you. That was one of my questions, too, so I just crashed that one off my list. But I do have a question with Aspen. So, we've been, as parents, you're, you're coached, I guess, to like start looking at Aspen and look at your students' assignments, and what have they been handing in? What are they missing? So, is that piece of it going to go away for the K-4?
Yes. Yeah, for now, Otis does have that function. Again, we had a lot of conversations around opening Otis up as a platform for parents to, to go in and view just that. Honestly, I feel like developmentally, and this is me on my own personal soapbox now, but they're really young learners for, for families to be able to glean any real information for looking at, at an individual student assignment by itself without any context. They're just too little. It's, and high school, perfectly appropriate to say, you know, "My son didn't, you know, he got a 70 on this." It's, it, it just doesn't stand alone at the elementary level. It needs all of the context to explain. I mean, it's like a parent going in and looking at Dibble's data all by itself. It would mean nothing to you without having that context. So, while you could monitor the grades, it, the, the story behind it is so much more important for an elementary student, and we had a lot of conversations around that, and I do firmly believe that.
Yeah, yeah, I just, as they started to get older, and this will be a culture shift, for sure, and something that's covered in all of these outbound communications, is that as the term starts to gear up to close, parents are like, "Oh, how many assignments are you missing?" And you're in Aspen checking to make sure that they're.
Well, remember, it's just K-4.
Right.
So.
And it's really more in the fourth and maybe the third even does.
Yeah.
For a long time, I don't think people even knew to look in there, but you're, so you're now going away from that, which is great.
Yeah.
I'm jealous that you don't go in Aspen.
If I can just add, we will explore the parent portal and see if it will be of benefit after we implement the first year. But a lot of communication to parents is, is key.
Yep.
All through the year.
So, I had that. When is the outbound communication to parents going to start? Obviously, we're talking about it here, but, you know, I'd love to say that every single parent from K to four is watching this meeting, but.
No, for sure. Well, we'll probably start this summer in the district newsletter, sharing the first plan for the parent information night. We'll post this presentation on the website.
Open houses, conference, but, and then live presentations, as well as Mrs. McDermott said, the posting of it, because, you know, it'll take several, several methods and opportunities for parents to digest it and ask questions, and then digest it again. So, we expect to hit the ground running, not only the beginning of the summer, but at every open house.
That's great. And then the last question is based on the, the report card, or the, is it called the report card?
Yep, it is.
Sure is.
So, on the report card itself, you know, the comments that are currently on there, the drag and drop, copy and paste.
Yes.
Participates in class, those all go away?
They go away.
Is there any free-form content on these, or is it 100% based on?
100%. That's why we built the Habits of Character, so that you wouldn't have the canned comment, and that you would actually get specific information on each of those standards we're calling them.
Love it. Great, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I thank you for your work on this, and thank you to all the teachers and staff and administrators that worked on it as well. I think I'm kind of excited that it was able to get put together so quickly. It's the fastest thing that I've seen happen since.
They were ready.
So, it's impressive. But the, a lot of questions, really. So, in terms of, I think of homework, testing, things like that, and I understand that they're little, but what, if there's not a grade attached to something, or there's not some sort of reward attached to performing well or not, how do you convey that to these students that you still have to do this work?
Well, they, it is. It's built, the homework, the homework information, conduct, behavior, all that is in the Habits of Character section, right? We've, we've built in like completes assignments in a timely fashion or something like that. So, they are still receiving feedback on that, just like they would on their regular report card. It's just actually more, more called out, in a sense, right, before it's kind of baked into, into the, the whole grade. Here, it's actually separated, so you would see students struggling with completing assignments on time, sort of like a comment.
Okay. Yeah. In terms of just their own mastery, how does that information get conveyed to that student where they fall?
Yeah, through those ICAN, right? So, we take the standards and switch the language around and add an ICAN in front of it. ICAN, say all of my letters and sounds, you know? And so, they're, they're, the standards are shared with students as part of the lesson objective, so they know, "This is what you're, this is what you're learning today. And look, remember when we were learning, you know, and I used to meet with students and go through the report card with them, and look how you're doing on, on shapes and geometry, you know?" So, it's very, very specific for students.
So, they'll have regular, real-time, day-to-day, week-to-week?
Assessments.
Far more than they get now, you know, in terms of the report card. You know, they get that information now anyway, because we do do standards-based grading. It's just not getting reported out to parents that way.
Right, okay. And then, how will this maybe inform teachers at the fifth, sixth grade level? Like, so when they look back at this, like, is there going to be some sort of like cumulative data that this would share?
Yeah, the report card will, they will have access to the final report card. So, they'll have the student's final report card, just like they do now.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I add to that? There is an interest in exploring after K-4, because remember, our grade five, six schools and elementary school as well, exploring standards-based grading there. In fact, you had two teachers here tonight in the STEM, Ms. Lindsay and Ms. Hilson, in that STEM class, grade five and six, there, they get standards-based progress reporting. It's very different. And so, our students have already dipped their big toe in it over at the Ryan. Teachers are very interested in, in exploring this. We're starting with K-4.
Okay, yeah. I mean, those are the, the big questions. The conference one, I think, is big as well, too. And then, is there some sort of feedback that, and I think some people are just quantitative data people, that, you know, your child has met 70% of the math standards to near mastery?
Sure. I mean, I, I think that what's, what's great is, you're going to be able to see that through these bars, right? It's, it's such a neat visual, I think, to say, "Wow, look in, in ELA, look at how much I've mastered, and I've got this far to go on, on these four." And so, now, I can see as a parent, I can reach out to the teacher and say, "Well, I noticed that, you know, they're still working on this. What can I do?" Rather than, they have a B in reading, what do I do? What is the, you know, it's, it's, and I think in terms of the Ryan teachers, they're going to be able to get a report card now and look back and say, "Look at the actual individual standards and say, 'Okay, the student just get, didn't get a B in reading, but look, they're, they're, they're reading fluently, you know, they're, they're reading with understanding, they're still just struggling on some, some sounding out words, so I'm really going to target that decoding piece for that student coming in.'" So, I think that they're going to be pleased with the new, more detailed information. It's far more granular than, than what they have now.
Yeah, I'm excited. So, you know, I wish you well as you sell to the community, so.
Can I just ask a follow-on question to that, please? So, on top here, though, this mastery setting, is that kind of an average of all of this? To say, "Here's where my child's at right now," and that, I mean, that titled decaying average is a little.
Where, where are you?
On the top here. Up in art.
So, the, not knowing what you're pointing to, I'm going to say no, just because I know that that's not a part of standards-based grading. I think it's art. I think it might say, who's, are you looking at, are you looking at Test Kitty?
No, it's, so, the title, Term Three Report Card Date Range, and then right below that, mastery setting.
Scale and mastery setting as decaying average.
Yeah.
And Jason, do you want to talk about that? That's a, that's what Otis uses. It is averaging throughout every time that standard is being assessed, but.
Yeah, but then what? Then under, then there's attendance, right?
Yep.
And then there's the first bar under that?
Mm-hmm.
And if you look over to the left?
Yep.
That's a standard in art.
Yep, okay.
Is that what you meant?
No, I'm just, because that seems like it's just overall. It doesn't seem like it's specific to art yet.
It is. It says, "Demonstrates an understanding of the concepts and content in art." Do you see that?
Yep.
On the left?
Yep.
Otis puts it in, I think it's alphabetical order, right, the subjects?
Yep.
Yeah. And this is just an example, we don't have the.
I think she's referring to the header.
Yeah.
She's referring to as the header at the top.
Do you want me to answer the question on decaying average?
I don't see the heading.
Sure, yeah.
So, even though it is mastery, near mastery, when you put that data into Otis, Otis calculates it as mastery, it would be like four, three, two, one. And what happens is, if you're assessing the same standard over and over again, and you're scoring the student at near mastery, near mastery, near mastery, then mastery, what happens is Otis calculates that as numbers, and the decaying average means that they calculate the most recent scores more heavily than the least recent. So, if you, if you've taken 10 assessments, the last three are weighted more heavily than the first seven. That's what decaying average is.
Okay. I, that might just be a little shocking for parents, if they think that that means that's what their kids.
Yeah. We are looking to clean up this form. I've asked for lines and boxes, and it doesn't really come out that way with Otis, but how we might, I, I agree with you, I think that term could be confusing as well.
Yeah. Is it the term that you're referring to?
Right.
The decaying average?
Right, and I was just wondering if that was maybe like, overall, your child is, is declining.
Oh.
Like, that's how I read that.
I see. No, it's just the way it's calculated. Because in standards-based grading, one of, one of the differences is that in the average, right, if you had a 50, and somebody lets you, a teacher is kind enough to let you retake a test, sometimes they'll say, you know, "You got a 50. You can take that test again, and you get an 80." I've shown that I've, you know, I'm near mastery on those standards. Many teachers might average those two together. In stand, in the, in the mindset and the purpose of standards-based grading is to say that we've wiped out that 50. We don't care what you didn't know, you know it now.
Right.
It's like your driver's license. When you go take your driver's license as a kid and you fail it a couple of times, which many of our Massachusetts drivers do, do that, you, when you get it, you don't have to drive a special car because you failed it before. You don't have to have a restricted license because you failed it before. You still get to drive the same car everybody else does, on the highways and on all the same roads. I look at assessment the same way in standards-based grading. When you take the bar exam 17 times before you actually get into law school, you don't have to go to a special, you know, you don't become a special kind of lawyer, you've, you've still done it. And it's like that in everywhere in our adult life.
Mm-hmm.
There's no time in your life that you can probably come, even, even the MTLS to become a teacher, you can take, you don't know how many times I've taken my MTLS. Maybe I had to take them 20 times before I could be a reading specialist. Not true, but what if I did? Nobody would know that, and I still get to be the same kind of reading specialist as the person who nailed it the first time. Does it matter that it took me a little longer? No, I learned it, and I can still do the work. And that's the, that's the advantage that we need to give to our students, instead of penalizing them for what they didn't know, but celebrating that, "Guess what? You might not have mastered this standard, but I'm going to give you another chance. So, we're going to work on this for the next few weeks, and then we're going to take a look at it again, and we're going to try this assessment. It might be the same assessment, we're going to try it again. And if you reach mastery there, then great. And then we're going to do it a few more times, and if you consistently reach mastery, then I know that you've got it." That's what I love about it.
Lovely explanation, wasn't it?
That was, I'm just thinking that that might be a question that parents.
Yes.
If that's shown on the report card, that's going to be a question that parents think that that's about their child.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. This helps me know to prepare for the, the parent presentation of what, you know, what people might be concerned about.
Thank you very much, Mrs. McDermott. All right, moving on to our submission and payment of bills, please. Mr. Anderson?
I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending June 8th, 2023, in the amount of $1,603,099.29.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson and a second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the payroll period ending June 8th, 2023, in the total amount of $1,603,099.29. For a roll call vote, Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Miss Bea'Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well for unanimous vote on our payroll. And our superintendent staff report, Mrs. Terry Oregan, please.
Sure. Let me first start by saying happy Flag Day to everybody. You may have noticed Ms. Garrish walking out in her best Flag Day outfit. You know, Flag Day is celebrated on June 14th every year to commemorate that date in 1777, when the Stars and Stripes flag became the symbol of America. I really want to thank all of our schools and our teachers who keep that tradition and celebration alive, as did the Heathbrook this morning and this afternoon. Let me just keep going here. Last week, we shared with you the flyer, that it's in your consent agenda regarding the UMass Lowell Engineering Camp. It's a two-week camp where students can focus on various engineering disciplines and hands-on problem-solving to solve problems through STEM in our world. We still have open slots for current high school students. Also in your consent agenda is the program to our ADA commencement ceremony. We thought it was important that we share this with the entire public. What a nail-biter the night was. As you might remember, it was pouring buckets up until about 10 minutes to 6:00 p.m. Principal Long stayed very optimistic and said it's going to clear. Well, sure enough, it not only cleared, it became a beautiful sunny early evening with a rainbow. So, it was very fitting for this class that came in during the most toughest times in 2019, 2020, and certainly went out as a bonded, caring, and shining class. I want to thank our Tewksbury Moore High School administrative team, Mr. Long, Ms. Dick, Mr. O'Leary, and certainly Kelly Mercier for making sure that the event went off so wonderfully, and certainly thank the class advisors, the Class of 2023 advisors, Ms. Brooke Pacheco and Joel Mignan for all of their amazing work with this class over the past four years. In your consent agenda, you also have the Appendix B Athletic Position Recommendations from Athletic Director Ron Druin. And some of the winter and spring coaching positions are still to be determined. We'll update you throughout the school year when those positions are filled. The Appendix B Extracurricular and Academic Recommendations will be in your July packet. We still have some work to do at the different schools on those positions, so we'll have them, as I said, for you in the next meeting. So, speaking of athletics, our Tewksbury Moore High School girls softball team, as you heard Rania say, made it to the Division II State Semifinals. That game was postponed tonight, but will be, let's see, let me just say, what did he say, the 17th at 7:00 p.m.? I'm sorry. Ms., do you have that date?
I do.
Ms. McDermott? Where they'll be facing or playing against Somerset Berkeley High School. As I said, this is a Division II State Semifinals, and it is on...
It is tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. at Worcester State.
There we go. We wish our softball team much luck and a great win. Students between the ages of 14 and 17 looking for jobs should know that they can come visit us over at the central office of the Tewksbury Public Schools for working papers if they have a job offer in hand. You can also get those working papers for the next two days here at the high school. That information, by the way, will be in our district newsletter by the end of this week for all of our parents. As a reminder, students, this Friday, June 16th, is our last day of school for the school year 2023, and it is an early release day. So, we do ask all of our parents to be reminded of the early release time for each of our schools, and again, that will be in our district newsletter as well. And that concludes my updates.
Thank you. Before I move on, I just want to check with our telemedia. Jason?
Yeah, I have a phone call to answer. It's on the phone.
Okay.
One of the speakers.
Okay. So, we're being told that the live feed is down. It'll be in recording and then shown back to the public tomorrow, probably at some later time.
Madam Chair, one more announcement. It's very simple. I promised you I would come back and inform you of any handbook changes. The Ryan, in fact, made all the edits that you had requested in that. That's been cleared up. Okay? So, the Level 1.2 and then the reference to North Street and Trahan are now out of the handbook.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Mrs. McDermott?
Thank you, yes. So, I had the privilege of going to my first probability carnival at Center Elementary School. Team 7C at the WIN planned a probability carnival project with their classes. Students created carnival-style games, which they then brought to Center Elementary School, where students in grades two, three, and four got to come and play the games. The WIN students were able to collect data on determining and confirming the probability of the student winning. This is a great example of not only project-based learning, but also service learning. In this way, the students, you know, because they were able to bring it to the elementary students and actually see it come to life. I have to thank Natasha Camuso and all of her 7C teammates, Kim Johnson, Cindy Remaska, Maggie Scully, and Fran Roth, and of course, Jay Harding and Rob Rogers for getting all of this scheduled during a very busy time of the year, and all of the teachers at Center Elementary School for fitting it into their schedule. I was lucky enough to visit and see many of the games in action, and it was really incredible to see the creativity from the WIN students working in their small groups and how supportive they were of the younger students participating in the game. And even if the student didn't necessarily win, I noticed the WIN students still, like, slipping them a little winning ticket even still, you know, noticing that that might make them feel good. So, I appreciated that. And the excitement from the Center Elementary students learning from the middle schools, it was palpable. It was great. I mentioned summer curriculum work. We had about 100 teachers interested in summer curriculum work, which is amazing. Unfortunately, we don't have the funds to provide that opportunity to everybody. We are prioritizing dual enrollment coursework at TMHS, curriculum unit revisions, so that we can make sure that we are continuing to keep up with standards alignment. Of course, the K-4 standards-based report cards and our SST restructure and MTSS playbook, and that's the work that we've been doing all year with Alex Hirschberg and Karen Baker O'Brien and the support staff from the schools. I look forward to giving you a more detailed update in July once I get through all of the approvals and we get that work done this summer. Speaking of the report cards, final report cards will be posted on Aspen on the last day of school or after all finals have been graded at TMHS. So, if you aren't sure how to access your child's report card, please reach out to your child's school secretary. And just a last plug for summer reading. As a reminder, all of our guidelines for summer reading are posted on our website and have been sent home in school and district newsletters, and it is never too early to get started, even if that just means getting that book in your hand and coming up with a plan to get it done. And again, I will encourage, we had a nice listening session with some students at the Ryan who were doing a little sharing about their feelings on summer reading, and that was fun. And we did remind them that it is okay to listen to a book while you're reading it if that's a little bit easier for you to enjoy that book, too. So, I don't want parents to be afraid to read to their children, with their children, or even encourage some listening. Whatever works.
Any questions or comments for either superintendent or assistant superintendent?
Just one, and it's on summer reading. It's having a sixth grader that's just now coming into this, that everybody's reading the same book.
Yeah.
Maybe some advice for families and kids that are like, that's not the subject that I like. As much as you want to try something new, you know, this is, you know, see, everybody has a different opinion, even if you don't like it, you can come out of reading it and then share why you don't like it, because there's probably someone else who didn't like it.
Absolutely.
As well. But I know as having an independent reader who loves reading, handing a book to her and saying, you have to read this one, is a really tough concept to grasp.
Yeah. And we heard that. We heard that from students. A lot of the students were sharing that. And one of the things that, one of the benefits of the one-book-one-school program, and it is actually a program that's run in several schools across the country, is to build a community. It's about the community sharing that comes from being able to discuss a book with teachers and friends. So, we did encourage students to give it a try and hang in there. There will be times in your life that obviously you're going to read a book that you may not necessarily enjoy and have to read it for a purpose. Many of the students did kind of agree with us when we were, I was trying to say to them, you know, it's just one book, it's not that long of a book, and you can read other books. They did agree that having some choice in the activities to do was helpful, and the Ryan has made a choice board for them to choose the activities and the way that they will respond to the book. But again, I would say if you can do any partner reading with them to make it a little fun, let them listen to the story. We shared that a lot.
Float the pool while you're listening.
And, yeah, and hopefully, they will see the benefits of reading, sharing in that reading experience with the whole school and how that's just a community-building event, and hoping to try to help support all students to feel even a sense of connection and belonging with somebody else through a book that they can all talk about the same. But we heard it loud and clear. We heard it.
Yes.
Yeah.
I can't tell you how many books I've read one chapter, and I'm like, goodbye.
I know.
I said, maybe we read it together.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's an interesting concept.
And the good news is it is pretty short. Yeah. Looks thick, but...
Any other comments? And I have none, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as we wind down the end of our school year here, we're also winding down the end of our fiscal year in the business office. So, we're sort of closing out the books on Fiscal '23, and we'll be opening up the books for, actually, the books are open now for FY '24 for us to start putting in purchase orders, things we know we're going to be buying in FY '24. We have a time where we carry both fiscal years open in Munis, so we're in that phase right now. So, we're working on making sure we hit our budget target when we close our books at the end of the year, also keeping an eye on our grants that have expiring dates coming up, and make sure we spend those funds first before we move on to other sources of revenue to use for our expenses. We sent out our staff salary agreements today to all the TTA members, which a lot of times brings up issues with movement in the salary scale, longevity issues, things like that. It's just kind of a basic, here's where we think you are heading into next year. We want them to review it against the contract. If the salary statement has any issues, they get back to us. It helps prevent some payroll errors for us in the business office and kind of is good for the teachers to see kind of where we think they're at on the salary scale from year to year. So, those went out today, and we'll get feedback from them over the next couple of days into That's pretty much it on the business end. Transportation-wise, we continue to look at developing our models for next year and how the school transportation system will best work. If we do look at any schedule changes, we'll bring those to you in July. Right now, the initial models that we have look like it would be no more than like a 15-minute swing for any particular school. And that would be enough to kind of ease some of the pressure on the buses and still be able to provide separate routes for the, all the K-4 elementary schools, dedicated buses for their own schools. So, again, it's, we haven't had time to do the detail work of the actual routing and the actual students. We are trying to come up with a method to identify who the actual riders are, as opposed to years past, we've always just kind of assumed everybody's going to ride. We know that's not the case. We kind of overbooked, similar to airlines, and just trust that they're going to fit when we actually hit the road. But a method to identify riders, we think, might actually help us in routing the buses more efficiently. So, we're kind of contemplating on some sort of a sign-up or a registration process for families going forward. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Any questions, comments?
Sorry, I have just one.
Yes?
And it's on the ESAR funds for the 2024. Just wondering how that project is moving along. I think I've asked the question a couple of times, just to make sure that we're still on track with the, I think it's an HVAC?
Yes.
HVAC program, project?
Yes. So, we had a meeting yesterday, actually, with our engineering design firm, who presented us with about six different options, approaches to heating and cooling and ventilation improvements at those schools. We vetted it with our maintenance folks. I talked to some people in the HVAC business that we knew, as did John Marchand, and kind of got their feedback on what we thought would be the best approach before the engineering and design firm got too far down the road with one path. This was their first ask of us, which approach we'd like to pursue. So, we gave them our feedback on that Tuesday. So, now they're ready to hit the ground running and get some detail work done, drawings, and get our, they plan to have our design done, bid specs out in the early fall for work to be completed next summer. And he thinks that will put us in a good position to get not only contractors in, but get some good pricing. And we'll be kind of early in being out on the street, letting folks know we're looking for work if we're out in September.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have no questions, so thank you for your update. Moving on next with our consent agenda, did Mrs. Terry Oregan or Mrs.?
I think we covered it all.
No?
I think we got it all.
Any questions, comments on consent agenda?
Nope.
Did a motion to?
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mrs. Bee Joni Smith, a second from Mr. Russo. How do you vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no oppose. That passes unanimously.
I'm opposed.
You were opposed?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, we have one, two, four members in the affirmative and one opposed. Okay, the school committee member reports. Elementary School Building Committee, Mr. Russo?
Our first meeting that, since I've been appointed, will be next Thursday, so I'll have some updates at our next meeting.
Okay. And Tewksbury C. Fair, Mr. Parsons, Mrs. Bee Joni Smith?
Their business meeting is, last business meeting is tomorrow evening, and there's no new updates since the last meeting that Mr. Parsons attended.
Okay. And Wellness Advisory Committee, Mr. Russo, Mrs. Bee Joni Smith?
Yeah, we have identified personnel and community members to join our committee. Our next meeting will be scheduled for September 6th upon the return of the new school year, and we look forward to gathering all committee members. I know they're in the process of formally inviting them and whatnot now as we speak.
Good. That sounds exciting. And then Policy Subcommittee, which is myself and Mrs. Anderson, and I think we have, our next meeting is Fri, is next Friday, the 23rd, right, at 10:00 a.m.?
Yep.
But we are moving into our next section's policy, so if you guys are okay with that, we can just move on there. So, I'll just give a quick update, and then if Mrs. Anderson has something to add, please do. We had our first meeting, trying, it was more of a cleanup meeting, I think, where we had some policies, you know, that maybe we had looked at in the past but needed some more feedback from some stakeholders, hadn't quite gotten to a place where we were ready to bring them forward to the committee yet. And then we still have some outstanding ones that, you know, again, we're seeking a lot of feedback. But the two that we could bring forward today is, first of all, our policy on pediculosis, which is head lice. And after checking with, you know, lots of stakeholders, we spoke with our lead nurse, Mrs. Constantino. She had given us feedback based on National Association of School Nurses, looking at other policy manuals. MASC has, no longer has this in their manual, and it's no longer, you know, listed as a communicable disease. So, it's our recommendation to rescind JLC-R2. Any discussion?
No.
With the caveat that, of course, this is a policy, procedural policy that would still exist through the Health Department at the school. So, if we, if there's no discussion, is there a motion to rescind?
Is this just an informational reading?
So, for rescinding of policies, we can vote initially. We don't have to bring it back three times.
Okay.
Any changes or adoptions, we would bring back three times.
Okay. I'm happy to make that motion then to rescind policy JLC-R2 as presented tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. Russo and a second by Mr. Parsons. And for a roll call vote, how do you vote? Mrs. Bee Joni Smith?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote to rescind JLC-R2 on pediculosis. Moving on to the next one is our policy on CM, which is School District Annual Town Report. So, you can see in red, there have been some changes that were recommended. I guess, Mr. Libby, if you wouldn't mind, I had mentioned this to you before, just maybe some commentary on what the procedural...
Yeah, so our portion of the annual report, we usually get requests from the town hall as to what they, when they want it from us. It's typically the, and I look back to the last few years, and it was, you know, mid-to- early February when we provided the information to the town. So, that was sort of the crux of what I saw in that change was, there was language in there about reporting by January 15th of each year, and that didn't seem to be what the current practice had been in recent years.
Okay. And there was some reference to the MASC policy as well. So, if there's any discussion, we can entertain discussion. Otherwise, this would come back next month as a first reading.
No discussion at this time.
No discussion, okay. All right. So, moving on to some old business.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you'll see our most current enrollment. This is an informational-only document. No vote is needed. I did just want to draw your eye to our total. It may shift one or two before Friday, but currently, our total population in the Tewksbury Public Schools is 3,249 students. That is up 48 students from our October 1st SIMS report. So, we've had some increased enrollment. I'd also like to draw your eyeballs to the kindergarten column. We are seeing quite an increase in our youngest of, you know, students. So, when, if we add incoming kindergarteners to that PK number, we're probably looking at another large kindergarten class coming into next year. And I think that's really important to note, because if you did the math and you added up grades eight, nine, 10, and 11, and back out approximately, each year we lose approximately 100 eighth graders who choose either private school or the VOK. Out of that very low eighth-grade number, we're at about 711. Out of that very low eighth grade number, we're at about 711 students here at this high school next year. So give or take, you know, handful. So where we're seeing great growth in our youngest of grade levels, we know that bubble of declining enrollment, it's really declining student population in town is really up in that, those upper grade levels right now. So this is an update. Again, no, no vote is needed.
Any questions or comments?
No. None at this time.
I just have a question. Is that, is that a typical number? Is that what we've seen in, you know, the last five years, the about approximately?
The total?
With the, from eight to nine, losing?
No, this is the lowest our high school population has ever been in history. It's actually been declining. We're down over 300 students since the time we planned this school till now. I mean, we we hit that 1,100-ish, 1,100-ish mark, I think, I want to say maybe 2014, but we're, I mean, as I just said, we're at 740-ish right now, going down to 711. Again, give or take a few. You know, little shifts can happen, but no, it's it's quite low.
Anything further? Okay, now our new business.
All right. Our new business is also an informational-only item, but I really wanted to highlight our summer school and enrichment programming. And I'm sorry that the print is so small, but we do have quite a bit going on. Two things I want to share with you is just look at all the special education, credit recovery, 21st Century, Penguin Pride, the Title I Jump Start, all of that, extra help, tutoring, special ed extended year, as well as some real wonderful enrichment. And I'd like you to shift your eyes all the way over to the right-hand column, that bright yellow column, because as I told you at the last meeting, we were surprised with some Acceleration Academy grant dollars coming in late in the game, and we have applied for $94,000, which is pending approval, which will add an extra week to all of those applicable summer school programs. So that's amazing, and kudos to Cindy, Dr. Cindy Bastieri, and all of the teachers that have raised their hand and said, yes, we want to do another week with these students, and we're looking forward to a really enriching summer school programming. You can look at the enrichment that we've listed. What we're trying to also do is collect all of those varied Booster Club documents and house them on student family support, along with those, that Macaroni Kids and Khan Academy. So the parents just do have a place to reach out and see, rather than everything coming in email, or even after that, where is it so they can access it again? And if you turn the page, you'll see the freshman orientation will continue like it has been annually, that assists our incoming freshmen to acclimate and orient to the high school, and then alphabet. I do want to just note, we have expanded the facility availability for alphabet because we have quite a demand. We have over 130 families already, so we've opened up the WIN and the REC Center so that they can expand as much as they need, whether it's a day-to-day, an enrichment-based, or full-week programming for our families. So this list will also be published in our district newsletter before the end of the week.
Any discussion?
Sorry, just another question.
Yeah.
For the alphabet, do they need additional help and folks to come and work for them? And is that opportunities for the high school kids?
Well, I'm not sure. They they usually post and handle their their staffing on their own. I don't know if they'll be utilizing high school kids this year, but if they are, we'll certainly get, make that mention out to our families. I'm sorry, I forgot again. Based on our credit recovery, Dr. Bastieri shared with me that we will be receiving $75,000 for our ASOS grant. That's our after-school and out-of-school time monies that help support our learners that need that. So lots of great funding through the state to help us support our learners in Tewksbury.
So, Madam Chair, if I, if I may, just on that grant, so I just, as a committee, I mean, we should, I know we're sort of, we're tasked with approving all those grants, so I just, is that going to be added to the consent agenda for next month, or is that something that was already?
It's added to our grant list, correct, Mr. Libby?
Uh, yes.
So it's on a new grant, then?
Right.
It's a current grant. We, it's, we have reapplied every year, and that actually helps pay for that credit recovery program that we see in the summer.
Got it. Understood.
We haven't received approval yet. It's a competitive grant, so once we get the notification, we would bring it to the committee.
Great. Thank you.
For sure.
Isn't that all? Next is our matters of interest. Would you like to start? Does anybody have a matter of interest?
I'll just, maybe just express how wonderful it's been to attend some of these last couple of weeks, school events at the different schools in the district, both not only at our older grade levels, but also at our younger grade levels. So kudos to all involved. Flag Day presentation today was wonderful. It was superb, so.
And I'll just, so I believe that the DE and I committee was excluded from here, so I just would give an update there. They did host their Pride Lights Night, I believe it was the first of June, and I did attend, and it was a great turnout. The weather was not cooperating, but that didn't stop people coming and celebrating. So there's a lot of dancing and community support, which was was nice to see.
Was nice. Mr. Parsons, anything?
I have none right now.
Then, okay. Will you be a joining?
No, not at the time.
And I, I don't either. I could just echo the sentiments of, you know, the end of the year, it's being the best and the worst time. It's been busy, but it's been really exceptional to see some of the activities and things that are going on in the schools. And, you know, you want to try to make it to as much as you can. I think collectively, we've done our best this year, so it is next year, too. And that's it for matters of interest. Future school committee meeting dates, July 19th. We have a school committee workshop at 4:30 p.m., followed by our regular meeting. August 16th, school committee admin workshop at 2:00 p.m., followed by our regular meeting. Then future Subcommittee and Advisory Committee dates, Elementary School Building Committee is June 22nd. CPAC Business Meeting, as they mentioned, was tomorrow. Wellness Advisory Committee, September 6th, and Policy Subcommittee, June 23rd at 10:00 a.m. Also to mention, the Appendix B Subcommittee, that the, the school committee has been meeting with administration and the TTA leadership since the contract was signed last year as an agreement to meet monthly and then have information that will be delivered by June 30th. So we have our final meeting this month upcoming, so I just wanted to kind of put that out to the public as well, that that work is being, being done, done well. Any future agenda items?
Do.
Yeah.
Kind of curtailling off of the Appendix B conversation. I'm just looking at it for the sports, and I just have a lot of equity concerns, specifically around staffing between teams, staffing between different gendered teams within the same sport, allotment of stipended positions. Just like some examples, I'm looking at baseball, which has five paid positions plus two paid stipends, compared to softball, which just has three paid positions. And I imagine the rosters are relatively similar. Looking at football, which has 10 paid positions, compared to something like boy soccer or girl soccer, rather, which has three. Looking at cross country, which has four paid positions plus one stipend. I'm just going to speculate here, but I don't think the numbers on those rosters constitute that amount of investment in personnel. There's a coach on here that is getting paid for two head coach positions. It would be nice to get just some rationale or explanation for what I'm seeing there. It'd be nice if our athletic director could come in and give us some tangible data about the coach-athlete ratio for each team. I'm thinking safety and fair access to a coach to help develop kids. I'm curious about the total expenditures per sport, including equipment, game fees, tournament fees. An estimate of hours spent practicing, traveling, and at games, and then the rationale for the number and types of these positions, just because what I'm seeing right now, just, it doesn't align with my values and it doesn't align with the values, I think, that we've been toting for this school district.
So, so if you don't mind, Ms. Garabedian, Madam Chair, so, Mr. Parsons.
Sorry, Madam Chair, this isn't discussion, I'm just asking for an agenda item.
So.
Can we table it to the next meeting?
There is an Appendix B committee that I just want to make sure Mr. Parsons is aware of. That involves members of the school committee, Ms. Garabedian, as you pointed out. It also involves member of the union. It also involves members of the administration. All of those conversations are being discussed, and as Ms. Garabedian already pointed out, that will be presented to the union, to the negotiating teams as of June 30th. So.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. I want to hear from the athletic director himself, not three.
Pick up the phone and get, pick up the phone and give him a call.
Move this, I can move this to next month.
Where his boss? He can come in and present to us, Rich. Thank you.
I can move this to next month, and the request can go through the superintendent.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Can I just clarify, though, Mr. Parsons? I, I think I captured all of your questions. I did not quite capture, after expenditures per sport, I heard the number it takes, and I didn't hear the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, so I was looking for just an estimate. It would be hard to calculate, so any approximation would be great. Just hours spent practicing, traveling, and at games.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that, any other future agenda items?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn at 8:53 p.m. by Mrs. Bee Joni Smith, second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.